Where's Steve? They're not coming today.
He's coming, he's just a little late.
Pulling a calf, pulling a calf.
Hey, before they get started, I got one thing.
Oh.
You're, you're, you're live now?
Well, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Uh, basically, I just want to let y'all know, we got a prisoner out in, uh, El Paso, Texas, and we gonna be flying out. We got two male officer and female officer to fly out Wednesday morning. And, uh, El Paso's gonna deliver to the airport, pick her up, and we flying back, so just letting y'all know that we got two people flying.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Why not, why not drive?
It was like fourteen and a half hours.
Are you going? Matt, you going?
I mean, you want, uh, you know, they can let you go if you want to.
Brad, maybe.
Yeah, that's like, uh, you going, Matt?
Great ham want delivery?
Send bad bread, I don't know.
Yeah, full time, pay us delivery. What the COVID's done right now, that's the problem. We can't just put people in, like we used to, we could drive and they, we could stop it, we could put somebody in jail. But the jails don't want to take anybody, so.
Uh, got it.
Put them in fourteen and a half hours straight driving with a prisoner, and that's, that's too much for a prisoner. Anyway, I'd have to stay two nights, and we gonna get the round trip tickets and all for fourteen hundred. So, I, I mean, I could probably, time you drive in a man fire tape for two days, it would be pretty mad, I think, for the jury.
So what does somebody have to do in order to be able to qualify to get picked up in El Paso?
Well, they, uh, they have a good night, possession of meth, more than two hundred grams. Uh, it don't matter.
Guess not? He's not calling any names.
Yeah.
He's just putting facts out there people might ought to know. All right. Well, are we ready? We're up, we're ready. All right, let's call this, um, planning commission meeting order, uh, December third. Mr. Slade, would you mind, uh, the notification?
Please, let's pray. Father, thank you so much for the blessings that you bestow on our community and how thankful you are to us, Lord. A collection of, of people that stand in need of, of everything that you can provide us, especially in this season. Father, we turn to you and we ask you to pour out your hand of blessing upon us, your hand of protection, uh, with your hand of encouragement and hope. Uh, everything that your word says about you, Lord, we, we stand on those truths and we acknowledge that that's what undergirds us, is what encourages us to keep going. Father, as these men continue to faithfully serve this community, I pray that, uh, they too, uh, would be recognized, at least by you, Lord, for what they are doing, the commitments they made, the sacrifices they made. I pray that you would give them the wisdom that they need, uh, and, Father, we ask for that unashamedly. Lord, we thank you for our first responders, the, the guys, the ladies, Lord, who step into harm's way in so many different ways. And, and we learn every day, Lord, that what they do for us and on our behalf is, uh, Father, it's, it's, uh, it's dangerous work. Father, I pray that they would be encouraged in what they're doing, that their sacrifice and their service is not in vain. Thank you for how you bless us through them. I pray for their protection and their safety in Christ's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right. First on the deal here, old business. Uh, there was a motion to, well, yeah, soon approve, uh, minutes from, uh, October twenty ninth, have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Brad.
Okay.
Second by Daniel, all papers say aye, all opposed. Old business, have any, old business?
Uh, there is no old business.
Okay, new considerations?
All right, so the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Don Clyburn on Loughlin Road. Uh, Mr. Clyburn is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a five thousand square foot wedding and events venue. This property is located on the north side of Loughlin Road. It's a twenty acre parcel, the property is zoned A1, that's an aerial view of the property. The venue will house weddings, birthday parties, reunions, and community functions such as the Star Christmas event and the Fourth of July picnic. Mr. Clyburn wants to make sure that he can be approved for this use before he gets detailed site plans and architectural drawings. So this is a preliminary site plan. The building will be placed here on the property, on the twenty acres. He shows his parking layout, approximately forty-five spaces here. He has his hard surface handicap parking in front of the building, and he's proposing that the maximum number of occupants would be a hundred and fifty. Um, he's proposing hours of operation is nine AM to ten PM on the weekends, which would be Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, they're proposing, uh, crushed limestone parking area. And this is, it's gonna be a, uh, metal building, white in color, and it will be similar to, uh, this picture. These are views of that property. Uh, Mrs. Clyburn is here today, if y'all have any questions. And the property has been posted and we have received one call in opposition, uh, due to an increase in traffic and, uh, negative impact on the quality of life. These are surrounding properties.
How far from the property to where these locations, these houses are?
Closest house is probably a little old five hundred feet, pretty good ways.
But, but that's the only, I think that's the only call that I've had is questioning how close it'd be to some other homes, and I wasn't sure.
It's a pretty good distance, where they're located at is.
And it's gonna be a little further back than the houses are. And a buffer now will be needed, um, you know, to buffer the building and the parking area on both sides. It won't have to run the distance of the property, but.
Okay, so, okay, so what we're, what we do today?
A buffer in the screen.
Are we gonna set conditions today?
No, sir, that would be on the hearing, we're just setting the public hearing date today.
Only other question, and I guess really, I hadn't even thought about how it was, uh, I guess they were complaining about possible, uh, alcohol consumption. But, I mean, that's, that's a dry area, how would you, is, can that be?
It's not, it's not qualified for serving, so it's not gonna qualify there.
It can't serve.
I don't think that it could qualify under ABC unless ABC is willing to undertake that.
I mean, we're not gonna be serving alcohol.
Right, I mean, and that's the only couple of things that I've heard, and I was gonna ask y'all about that.
Um, I don't know, like, when they, they cater, I know when you cater weddings and stuff, I think they have, I, I'm not sure about that part about it.
Well, you know, you're gonna control what somebody does, they go out to the trunk of the car.
Yeah.
But, but as far as, yeah, okay, that, and that's what I told him, I said, you know, can't control that anywhere. I mean, anywhere, so it's really not a, a real factor there, but, uh.
So one condition could be, if the board is up behind to do so, would be that there would be no serving of alcohol in this hearing event?
I don't think they can though, can they? I mean, I'm not legally, I mean, we couldn't do it anyway.
So even if the circumstances were to change at some point, if you're there, you would still be prohibited under the condition of.
I mean, what, if, if that comes up, what do y'all, how you feel about that?
No, we're not talking about consumption, if somebody goes out to the front.
No, I thought, she talking about serving inside.
We're talking about officially serving.
If that was.
That the owner of the establishment.
I haven't verified, but, um, the person who was opposed said they had talked to ABC about alcohol and could they have it on the premises. And they said that, uh, Mr. Clyburn wouldn't have to have a license, but if a caterer or someone else had it, that they could bring it in and serve it.
I surely know that.
Yeah, so the condition, again, a condition could simply state, there won't be any serving of alcohol in this during an event?
I mean, I'm not pushing that, I'm just, put it as, that was one of the questions.
I wish Don was here, um, I wish Don was here.
Yeah, well, we can come back, we're not either that point.
Yeah.
This is discussion.
No, that, that was, I'm just letting you know some things that, that I had heard, and I would've called you, called y'all, but it's, it's just as good a place as any is to say in that way. But, no, we don't, that's when I was asking, do we have to set these conditions today?
If, if that's a primary concern of somebody who's objecting, and you can address that on the front end by suggesting what, what a condition was this?
Yeah.
Then you eliminate that objection before you have to deal with it in a.
Kind of letting you know upfront.
Anyway, that's just something to be considered and followed.
All right.
All right.
Other than that, I've, I've had several calls, they're just asking what's going on and, uh, you know, and honestly, like, some had said, there, I guess there's some others, but there are, we know there are some other event places in proximity, not with a few miles of you.
All right.
And, uh, so it wouldn't be quite right to say no to, to you when you got others right there, and the others have seemed to have never been a problem. So, they've, they've never been. So, uh, what do we need to do?
Set the public.
But, I mean, we need to, uh, just to set it?
Set it.
So, and so you at least know you can move forward possibly, okay?
I might motion, set it.
Say it. Motion by Steve, second by Brad.
Jay here.
Oh, Jay.
It don't matter.
Yeah.
Jay and Brad.
Yeah, I went together, okay, uh, sets a public hearing, so, all in favor say aye, all opposed, okay?
Thank y'all.
Thanks. Tell, y'all, tell Don to holler at me if you have any questions, okay, thank you. All right.
All right, the next item is a dimensional variance for Edward Gardner, uh, twenty fifty-two Highway four seventy-one. Mr. Gardner is the owner of Highway four seventy-one Storage LLC, and he's proposing an expansion of the storage facility at that address. This property is located on the east side of Highway four seventy-one. It's a two acre parcel and the property is zoned C three. That's an aerial view of the property, there are two existing storage buildings on this property, and he's proposing the addition of a third building. Uh, the building will be two hundred and eighty feet by forty feet. And, um, the ordinance requires us, the side setback to be twenty feet, and, um, Mr. Gardner will only have ten feet on the south property line, which is here. So he's requesting a variance of ten feet from that twenty foot setback, side setback. The building will match the existing buildings in color, uh, they're beige. And, uh, this is just a example of what it might look like, he may add that, uh, gate across the front. He'll have twenty bays.
Is that Steve's?
And it will be used for.
As long as you're allowed to use it for state stuff, I don't know if we got.
That was smart, that was smart.
It'll be used for covered RV and boat parking.
Is he here?
He is out there today, and.
Right here.
Okay, and so the area where the campers are parked is where that building will be going. These are views of the existing buildings on that property.
Why do you have to go, what, what makes it to where you're here? I mean, why do you need that other ten foot?
Uh, the, the lot is kind of narrow, and when you have a thirty or thirty-five foot mobile home or trailer or boat, in order for it to be backed in between the existing building and that area, just gives more room.
Push that building over?
Yes, sir.
To be able to back it in there? I, we've got, I mean, where you're at, I don't know, and you don't, I mean, I don't think you know me either, really.
Yeah, I've met you before.
But, I mean, we hadn't talked about this.
No, sir.
But where you're at is a lot of storage buildings, uh, and storage things, uh, and I don't want that in, I, I don't wanna just keep packing, packing, packing storage buildings and think, in a very, I mean, that, one day, where you're at is gonna be probably worth more for something else, but, uh, uh, I don't wanna tell you no, and I got, I mean, I got four of the guys here that's gotta vote for me. Uh, please, keep it nice, and, uh, the state thing really hit the trigger for me. But, uh. You know, Steve, our last guy that came, we requested them to do some vegetation and to do the screening, you know, make it look more appealing, uh, from the road.
The last guy that, uh, was also in the middle of a residential zoning area. I'm in C three, I've been there since two thousand thirteen, I mean, two thousand three. Uh, what I'm attempting to do with that building, you'll see, the, uh, RV units on the, on the fence line, that will cover up twenty of those, just leaving a very few at the back and a few at the front. I mean, it's gonna clean it up.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's one of your concerns. I mean, the alternative is, you turn it down and it just stays like it is, because.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let it turn it down, I'm gonna tell you that right now. I just wanna make that end, where you're at, attractive for people that's driving by.
That's one of the things that'll happen, if the building's up there, it'll look like the building on the right, when they see it, it'll be covered up, uh, you know, to cover up those units that are out there. They'll be parked enclosed building.
Um, just please help me, and I.
I've operated for seventeen years there, I've never had anybody come complain about the appearance of the.
You're exactly right, I'm not talking about you.
Right.
Uh, we, we can only cross this bridge one time, you know, and, uh, but anyhow, I'll make a motion if we set it.
Okay, motion sets a public hearing by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion?
Yeah, and one of the things that'll help that cleanup side, you keep those Ole Miss campers. Usually, I think that's gonna help out a lot.
Yeah, the, the.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, some vegetation is what I mean as far as laying, look nice, you could plant some trees out there, even though you are in a commercially zoned area.
Right.
We do require businesses to, you know, uh, either put brick or, or put vegetation around. We, we have vegetation, landscape ordinances, which obviously your grandfather's in, your existing one, but we could require you to do that on the next one, you know?
You're talking about like grass and pears or something?
No, like a holly bush or something, that'll kind of scream.
In addition to the brick on the building?
No, sir, I was just saying, some vegetation would go a long way and, uh, and.
You talking around, right fence or around the buildings?
In the front.
Yeah, just around the frontage. Yes.
I'm confused where you want it.
Right, he.
Right there.
I know, but, uh, he, he talking about building.
I mean, his place.
I think they want it along the front, fence along the highway.
Trash stuff, his place is usually as clean as any place.
The entire two hundred and fifty feet across the front?
But.
Could be space.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just.
Well, me and you, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
All right, I got a motion in a second, uh, any, any more discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
The next item is a conditional use permit for Jerry Gibson at one ninety-nine Vernon Jones Road. Uh, they're seeking the, um, Mr. Gibson is seeking the conditional use permit to expand, expand Shady Pines RV Park. Uh, this property is located on the west side of Vernon Jones Avenue. It's a eight point seven oh acre parcel, it's zoned A1, that's an aerial view of that property. And this is his site plan, um. He's proposing the addition of seventy-five lots over a two to three year period. Each phase will be done and consist of fifteen lots. So this is all existing, and this will be the new property here, these will be the first fifteen lots that he will be developing.
So the piece in the middle, is that already there?
That's already there, it's on different parcels than this one, this is a new par- parcel.
So everything but the far right is already there?
But this, mm-hmm, right. And these are views of that property, where the new lots will be going.
Very dray.
And then this is the existing facility.
And, and just so y'all know, this is where we, uh, down the road, that's where we have all the flooding at.
Yeah.
I asked you about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Gibson is gonna be nice enough to work with us on helping us, allowing us to put some, uh, additional drainage on his property without charging us any, uh, in a, uh, type of user fee or temporary, you know, right away. So he's definitely, this is gonna behoove everybody's there to, to get it fixed. But he runs a nice place, looks good. Jay's far, I don't against it, not really.
All right, so we just need to set the hearing.
Yeah, all right, I'll make a motion, set the hearing. Say it.
Motion sets a public hearing by Jay, second by Steve, any more discussion? Not all in favor say aye, all opposed?
See y'all after the hearing.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Jeff and Jenny Moorhead on Barker Road. Uh, the Moorheads are seeking a conditional use permit to build a metal building, building house with an attached garage and shop. Uh, this property is located on the south side of Barker Road. It's a ten acre parcel and it's zoned RE one, which doesn't allow for the metal exterior. That's an aerial view of the property. This is their site plan, it's gonna be well off the road, it won't be visible from Barker Road. And their property adjoins their daughter's, um, property, and she already has a home on that property. Uh, these are, uh, examples of what it will be similar to, uh, they're, the hu- home will have a heated area of three thousand six hundred and eighty-one square feet, and the garage workshop will contain one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine square feet. Uh, the exterior, it will be, um, medium gray, these are just examples. Uh, they will have wooden columns on the front and the windows will be trimmed in white. This is a view of that property and the approximate location of where the home will be built. And this is, uh, looking from Barker Road, uh, the driveway going up to their, uh, where the house will be located.
Is the house gonna be viewable from the road?
No.
Mr. Moorhead, what are you gonna do in that shop? It's, it's not gonna be a commercial.
No, sir, it's just a.
Yours.
Garage, park my vehicles in, and my lawnmower, and, and, uh, I have.
You're not gonna run a commercial business out of that?
No, sir.
Make a motion, we set it.
I motion, sets a public hearing by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Welcome to the community.
Thank you. All right, next is a conditional use permit for Hale Fireworks in Jonathan Pond, uh, at one oh six Builder Square. They're seeking the conditional use permit to operate a fireworks stand, uh, during the fireworks seasons as regulated by state law. This property is located on the south side of Builder Square Drive. It's a one point four eight acre parcel, it's zoned C three, uh, the sale of fireworks is listed, it's one of the conditional uses in the C three zone. It's an aerial view of that property. And this is his site plan, uh, they're showing the tent here and a gravel parking area.
Nobody here. Nobody here.
And then these are views of that property there, off of Builder Square Drive. And these are surrounding properties.
This is the same thing where it's like two weeks in July and two weeks?
Yes, sir, during the.
Is there?
Really, the whole month of December, you can sell fireworks.
You can set up December.
Fifth.
Fifth, mm-hmm.
From December the fifth, and I'm, I'm educated.
What's the next closest, what is the next closest fireworks stand to that, did you know of it?
It's a month.
You probably got a, right there, Grand Sperry and, uh.
Grand Sperry is closest. Transferrings?
Yeah.
Maybe Spielway there at the gas station?
And it need to be in the corner.
Three or four miles. There's nothing.
There's nothing in that general vicinity.
I might motion, we set it.
Second.
Second, third.
All right, motion sets a public hearing by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
All right, the, uh, last item is a conditional use permit for Robert Presley at eleven thirty-nine Old Fannin Road, Suite R. Um, Mr. Presley is seeking the conditional use permit to open a liquor store on this property. It's in the Fannin Plaza Strip Center. This property is located on the east side of Old Fannin, which is in the Reservoir Community District, and the property is zoned C two. This is, uh, a point nine one, nine one acre parcel. It's an aerial view, and this is the, um, Strip Center here, Suite R is on the end. Liquor stores are listed as a conditional use in the C two zone. Our ordinance states that they can't be located within five hundred feet of the property lines of any existing residential use, residentially zoned property, church, school, hospital, convalescent, or nursing home, cemetery, civic organization building or facility, charitable organization building or facility, public or private park or playground, or any property zoned S one special use district. We have taken the measurement and, uh, we did not find that it was in, within five hundred feet of any of those uses. So this is, uh, the Strip Center.
Haven't we talked about this?
Well, we were gonna have discussion on it, and so, uh.
You guys, uh, decided to table action on it?
That's right.
So that you could have an opportunity to consider what method of regulation you felt, felt like would be appropriate? And, uh, we are prepared to, in a general way, discuss with you some, some potential conditions, since this is a conditional use permit situation, some potential conditions that might be.
How many square feet, how many square feet was inside this?
Yeah, well, Renee, he's wanting to know, he's wanting to know about this specific location, I don't know if we can, are we able to address precisely the, the number of heated and cooled square feet in there? Okay.
How many square feet is your location?
Yeah.
It's a fifty-nine, fifteen hundred and ninety square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, any, anyone who intends to speak needs to give their name and address and indicate who they are here representing if they're not in their individual capacity.
Uh, my name is Andy Clark, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Robert Presley, uh, and the comment just came from Matthew Presley. Regarding the, uh, square footage of the building.
Thank you.
How you doing?
So, obviously, we're not in a hearing, the, the, the only matter for determination today is to set it for hearing on the fifteenth, but if the board is ready to talk about conditions, since the applicant's here, it might be appropriate to go ahead and have that discussion in advance of the hearing, if the board wishes to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good on setting the public hearing on that, and then I think we can have our discussion in between this and the fifteenth, so, um, I'm, I'm good with setting the public hearing for the fifteenth, so I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
Motion sets a public hearing with Daniel, uh, second by Jay, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
They, they used to look good to me, uh, as far as conditions go, I don't know, uh.
There may be others, this is kind of a work in progress, but, but it's, uh, I think it's a really good start.
Just, uh, if you would, if you don't mind, maybe just share your number with, with Craig, he's our, he's our board counsel.
Yes, sir.
That way, if we could, if we need to have general discussion between now and the fifteenth on stuff that we're, uh, tossing back around between us, he can get in touch with you. You don't, you agree with that, Craig?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
That way y'all can talk between.
I'm available anytime, be glad to.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Renee, have we had anybody called to object to this? Okay, so.
The sign's been posted.
So this, it, you know, I, I, I don't want there to be a misapprehension on the part of the public that we're somehow trying to work something out behind the scenes. That there has not been stated opposition, we have not received phone calls in opposition, and anybody who is opposed is invited to attend the hearing on the fifteenth and can communicate to the board whatever their objection may be at that time. And if anybody objects in between now and then, I am available to discuss their objection at that time.
Hey, and, and the reason I mention that, if you're able to get in touch with him, the board's still having conversations and discussions on, this will be our first liquor store to approve in this area, so we wanna be sure we're on the same page, and we've had our, our due diligence and research in what we want to open the box with, right?
So, I just wanna be sure we have a way to get in touch with you before the fifteenth, 'cause what I don't wanna have to do is come back on the fifteenth and say, look, let's put this off till January
so we can continue to have discussions, so.
I understand.
That was the point of you being able to speak with Mr. Slade, we need some.
Yes, sir, be glad to.
Thank you.
All right, please, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I was just gonna say, that sign's actually been out since October fourteenth.
Right.
So we haven't had any calls.
Yeah, we, we need some feedback from you guys on some of these conditions, you'll notice that they're.
My only thinking is, is, I mean, we, we met here a couple of weeks ago with the PRV, and they already got regulations set up on the size, square footage, and I was thinking it was around two thousand square feet.
Yes.
And then we're gonna have this one come in, it's gonna be fifteen, so.
Let me, let me address. Yeah, so, let me, let me address that, that there is debate as to whether or not that is a viable regulation, okay? It's, it's likely that PRV will be able to get away with that because they actually own the property and they're not addressing that through a zoning ordinance. They're addressing that condition through their lease. We, we do not sit or occupy the same position as PRV. And so my concern is that we, that we be real careful about regulating exactly like that as if we had the same position as PRV does as it relates to that regulatory authority. I don't think that we occupy the same place. And so a burden that is, some of this is, is me counseling you guys and it may be a little bit ahead of the game, but we think that, that we think that the proposed fifteen hundred foot, square foot regulation is not overly burdensome and can be supported. Anything above that is likely to, to subject us to a challenge. And so that was, that was what we came up with. This, this is staff and ABC and me communicating with each other about these issues.
And, and that was kind of my point. We're still trying to be sure we get it right the first time.
Yes, sir.
So we don't get caught back up into a bunch of
Yes, sir.
Cause you gonna be the last.
I like to be on the right side, too.
We, we know we don't want a five hundred square foot pop-up
Yeah.
location, right? We know that. And so some level of, of regulation is appropriate, but it's, it's at what level? And this board has the discretion to set that. This is the starting number for us that we felt could be supported under the law, and this was the guidance we also received from the state.
We'll have some good direction in the, in the oncoming days for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you.
All right.
Okay.
Site plan?
All right, so we have a site plan, architectural review for Zachary Ainsworth of ZA Construction at ten seventy-one Cato Road. Mr. Ainsworth is adding a two thousand square foot addition to his existing building. This property is located on the south side of Cato Road. It's a twenty acre parcel that zoned A one. There are two existing buildings on that property. And so his existing shop is shown here in his office area. He's gonna add a two thousand square foot addition on the east end of that building. These are his elevations. This is what's seen from the road. This is the addition. It does show brick along the front of the building. This is his floor plan, and the addition is this on the end. It's for offices and a conference room. These are views of the property. You can see the addition.
What are we here for?
So if we, if we, if we approve it, we need to get information on the
They put the windows in?
They got the cart for the horse.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Brad, second by Steve. Any discussion? More discussion? All of us say aye? All opposed?
Nuisance property.
Oh.
All right. Your turn. Nuisance properties.
Okay. First, first item under nuisance section is the Marcia Robles nuisance property at six fourteen Williams Road. This is District One property. We'll open that nuisance hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Anyone on behalf of Marcia Robles should make their way toward the podium, please.
All right, so we received a complaint on this property in May of twenty twenty. They had started that porch roof without a permit and grass and rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken May twenty-eighth.
Renee, will you go back? Do they need a permit to fix their roof?
They, they added a porch.
Do they need a permit?
We do, yes, sir.
Really?
Mm-hmm, we do.
Are they here? Is anybody here?
She is.
Anybody here?
Uh, she did call and she said she would come in and get her building permit, cut the grass and clean up. I think Kathy extended her time to
Y'all violated that.
Get the permit. These are the new pictures. They have done a good bit of cleanup. We still don't have a permit, though.
Who's just be at one?
These pictures were taken yesterday.
Sorry, we'll be finding four here one day. So, okay. We got two things here. They have done some cleanup.
They have done a good bit of cleanup.
Yep.
Looks better. There's still a little stuff on the side of the house.
If it been on the other side of the road, it'd been in your district.
Jared, this, if they go like today and pay the fee and get a permit, would you be okay with that?
Oh, I'm okay. That's what, that was gonna be my ma, my next question. What can we do to just help the situation? Can you just go in?
I've got a, if we, if we do something to this, I got a bunch of them that are fixing to get flogged.
I mean, can, could they just get a permit?
They can, yes, sir.
And we, things would be okay?
Yeah, so the board needs to instruct staff. Typically, when work has been initiated before a permit has been issued, there's a doubling in the permit fee because of that violation. So we need to know, is that what the board wishes to do in this case?
Let me ask, let me ask you, what, what do you ask them? You're just gonna put a porch on it? What? What are we gonna inspect, other than just have a permit?
Part of it is the materials that they're using and
Make sure it's built.
Tied in, how they tied in, all of that.
Public safety, or, or actually life safety.
It looks like it's well-built.
You know, it is.
We did porches, decks, patios, I, I mean, not patios, but porches, decks, things like that.
I haven't built one.
This week.
This week.
Well
Well, and
I mean, and, and they're the fence, and I, I didn't, like, if I was gonna build a porch, I wouldn't realize I had to have a permit if I had not been sitting here. You know, and anybody else. I could understand if you'd be adding on a whole room or whatever, but, so what, what is the minimum we can do?
We did get a complaint. Now, it wasn't just the porch. It was the condition of the property, the grass and
No, I understand that.
The debris, that's what started it.
I understand that part. And, and you, it looks like you've done that, and you, and I'm gonna tell you, you'll have to continue to do that because once you've already been, it's been put out there, you're already kind of on the radar. But as far as the situation now to, to help them at a minimal expense, what can, what would the board be willing to do?
Pay the fee that they would've paid had, had they come and got a permit.
I would ask that they not charge them the additional
That's what I'm asking.
Cause I wouldn't have known, and I'm a supervisor, to, I need to go get a permit to put on a
A porch.
Only reason I knew is because I had another situation similar to it.
Yeah.
And we get, uh, that last year.
I, I was gonna lay that additional fee.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm fine with that if the board's fine.
I'm good, yes, sir. Your, your action would be to, to, essentially to dismiss this as a nuisance, conditioned on their paying the appropriate permit fee today and getting that resolved?
I even hate to have to pay for, I mean, I
I hate to do it, but
I'm gonna say nine out of ten people that build a porch, it doesn't end up, okay?
But that's, that's probably the, I guess, kindest, best way we can do to try to help you. If you just get the permit part, you've done the cleanup and thank you for that, is just get the permit. But instead of doubling it like we normally do, would, would have to do, we're gonna give, as if you never started, you get a permit now. That, that fair enough? That'd help you out.
You need to see these lanes, this lane right here today, at her office, which is, you know where her office is?
No, sir.
I already told them and they'll get you squared up.
No, no, the building?
It's the building up the street?
Yeah, okay.
You did?
Very good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. For the record, we're gonna close that hearing. As president, we're ready to move to item two. We'll go ahead. The item two would be the Earl Walker Jr. Estate nuisance property consideration at two fifteen Walker Smith Road. This is District One. We'll open that hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of Earl Walker Jr. Estate. They need to make their way to the podium, please.
All right, so we had gotten a complaint here about someone living in a storage building, rubbish and debris on the property. These are the pictures that were taken. These are the new pictures. There's also appears inoperable vehicles on the property.
Is that some type of top over this shed or something, or is that all one, right there?
That's, that's a tin roof.
It's a tin roof. Over the top of it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way it's made.
Yes, that's the way it's made.
Oh, it's made like that?
Yeah, we bought it
Yeah, it's like kind of barn type.
Yeah.
Barn, medium, like
It's the type of roof that people are putting on their houses now.
Yeah. It just looks like it was an addition.
What's the complaint?
Right.
It's a nuisance, I mean, somebody's called in a nuisance.
So, there's no permit on this either, so we don't know anything about
How long y'all been there?
What, he's forty and I'm sixty.
That building hadn't been there that long.
Oh, that building?
Yeah.
Oh, how long that building been there?
Probably about, it's about two years, yeah.
They actually
They actually, the actual building they was talking about was a nuisance. We have, they told us to tear it down, get rid of
It was the blue shed that was there.
Blue shed that was there. Had been there since my dad built it. And actually, we tore it down and got rid of it.
They asked us to move, remove it. We had it torn down.
Sir?
So what, what, what
Y'all looked at, y'all got pictures of the blue shed and it's gone now? This, this shed here?
No.
The one that was He said it used to be one there and they took it down.
It had to be three years.
You talking about across the street from this?
No, it was sitting right, where you see that other, that gray looking storage house?
On the front porch.
Uh-huh, on the front porch. It was a blue storage house there. So, and it was built in nineteen sixty-nine. And the windows were broken out of it, and the tin was rusted, a tree had fell on it. So they said that it was a nuisance and it needed to be removed. We had
Who said that?
Uh, we
Who told y'all that?
We got a letter from, uh
Us?
Mm-hmm.
Jared?
The issue was somebody living in this shed right here. That was the issue.
Sir?
That never did come this
Wait, what now? What do I? Somebody was living in, in the other
Somebody's still living in it.
The other one?
In this one, in this one.
That's a storage building?
It's not designed
That converted into a, that's been the issue.
Window unit. It was already in there, personally.
So no permits, so we don't know if it meets, if it's safe, if it meets building code or anything else. That's something that we should look at.
It's a storage.
Huh?
It's a storage there where it got tubes and motor, got motors in it.
Who's living in it?
Nobody's living in it.
It's got an air conditioner in it.
It came with that condition.
When they bought it, it had, somebody was living in it when they
Somebody was living in it when you bought it?
Um, it was repo from a storage shed unit, and we purchased it from them. And it had that window unit in it already.
Okay, so where you, you, where do y'all live?
In Florence. I live, it's a
Well, I understand that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I knew you lived in Florence, but I mean, you're not living in that building.
There is a mobile home.
Know if we have a picture of that or not.
Have that shed?
Wait, go back, go, go back. Okay, see, the tip of it is, the mobile home, the tip of it is
Yeah, I see.
I got you.
Yep.
That's where
That's where you're living.
Black part is where the shed was.
And here, and behind
They said we need to turn
Right here, you see where the doghouse is right here? There was a blue storage unit was sitting there.
I got you.
Well, a storage
Right.
Unit, where my dad had built the storage house.
Right.
We were told that it was the new, it was nuisance, tear it down.
But it fell, something fell in and it was
Tree.
Yeah, I understand.
A tree fell in it. And they told us to remove it.
So y'all moved this in here and you're using it as storage and nobody's living in it?
There is motors.
Pull it back up to the front door of that you had just been
That was there before we told them
Right there.
This building was located there before
Before we even
Purchase.
Not this building. It's the other storage unit that they told us to tear down.
And y'all, who, who put this building here?
We did, him and me. My brother, my brother and sister.
Three?
Like I said, about two years, I knew.
All right.
The, the complaint that we got was that Central, or the Water Association hooked water up to it. There's a phone going to it. There's electricity going to it. We've had several complaints that somebody was living in it. That's what started
I got
This building.
Y'all got water to it?
No water.
Ain't no water running in it. There's a, the doghouse is sitting out there on the side.
I've got water running down a barn. I've got electricity that runs through a barn that we got a permit on now. I do not have a phone line up into it.
We all have no phone line.
Ain't no phone in it. There's no water running in it. There is no phone, but there is electricity in it.
Well, I can see electricity, but, or just lights. Have, have we, have we looked at it? Can we?
There was a person came out the other day taking pictures.
I mean, it's, no, can we actually
We haven't been inside it or anything.
Can we actually see inside the
If they let us, we can.
Greg?
They, they would need to authorize us to, to enter and
If
Do an inspection.
Would you have a problem with us inspecting it in the fact, just make sure it's not a living quarters? That way, anybody, the people that are saying that someone's living there, someone's not, has this, has that, or not, we can then say, no, it does not have these things? Do you have a problem?
I don't have a problem with that. You can come in and look, but what I'm, am having a problem with is the water man keep coming on our property going around our house and everything. Now, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, I, I, I can't, I mean, that's not something we can stop. That's
What are they looking for?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what they, they say that somebody's living in there, and you can
They want you to put a meter, probably.
That, that's what they want us to do. And he's gonna have a mobile home moved in there. And they're saying already that somebody lives, he's living in there. And I don't have a problem, or he don't have a problem. He say he don't have a problem with nobody going in there. But like I said, I'm having a problem with the water.
Well, I'm trying to help you
I know, I know.
By verifying if, no, what I'm saying, if, if no one's living there
Mm-hmm.
Then they don't, and we, we agree with that.
Okay.
Then they don't have a merit to come to us and say somebody's living there.
Well
Now, if it looks like somebody has been living there and all that, then they, I want you to be honest with me.
Okay, you can come
And, and, but you said something a minute ago, if you're gonna put a mobile home there, I'm gonna tell you, make sure you get a permit for that, do it on the up and up.
Yeah.
Or you're gonna have more problems.
Yeah, we're going through now, trying to get, they said it was too much stuff.
How many acres is it?
Seven.
Seven acres.
It's on seven acres. And I had two mobile homes there. Well, in the meantime, we didn't have them pushed down and took off. So, across the road here, where you're looking with a red truck, that's where the Walksmith Road is. And across there, there was two mobile homes.
Yeah, I know where it is.
And we didn't have those pushed off.
Okay.
And trying to stay within what we're being asked to do. They said it was a, a nuisance property.
They're trying to get you to clean up the property. That's what they're doing. It was called nuisance.
And I feel like, what, what else do we need to do, you know?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know what else as far as let, let's ask them what
Okay.
Well, for sure, y'all are gonna need to pay a permit fee for that building y'all brought in two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And whenever we go out there and inspect it, they need to make sure you have electricity up to it. It needs to be safe.
But we gotta have a permit for the storage building in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A storage building?
That's why we, we, we have never heard of a permit for a storage building, living in the country.
A storage building.
Well, if it's got power, you're supposed to have an inspection done.
Look, we are reaching way out further than I think. Like in the country, this is Rankin County.
Way out.
And we don't need to control every breath of secret.
And that's, we did not know.
I, I just want it cleaned up, I want it cleaned up and for obvious reasons. You wouldn't want a mess by you, now what, let me tell you, we don't go around looking for this, somebody has called it in.
The water department called it in.
Now, what else do you want, so we can go move on from here, what else do you want to do? Uh, Renee?
So we'll send, I'll send somebody to meet him out there.
Alright, well, as far as nuisance, uh, cleaning up, anything, is anything that we?
Well, there are.
Need to do, Dwayne or Renee?
Are the cars operable, do they have tags?
We don't have, no, they are not.
There's a lot of cars.
No.
Alright, what you need to do to those cars, instead of being parked all over the place? Get a little organization with them, make sure they are.
Cause how can you tell somebody they can't have as many cars in their house they want? That's crazy.
Well, just get it a little organized and you see what I'm saying, it won't look like, you know what I'm saying, just park them, get them parked, instead of just.
And if it's a nuisance for them, I live on a dead end road.
I know where you.
Nobody else lives on that.
I know where this road is.
So.
I, I do, I know where it is.
To me, it's nitpicking, the water company is nitpicking, that's exactly what they're doing.
And, and I'm, I'm trying to help you with that.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to do. So, y'all gonna set up a time?
And.
And, and now, if we get more reports that somebody like living in it now, I don't want to back up and say, you lied to me.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna make sure nobody's living there. And everything is on the up and up. And when you get ready to do the mo- mobile home, then you're gonna have to go through some other channels, that'll be something else.
Yeah, the mobile home.
That'd be something else different.
No, they going, they doing it.
Alright, so how do we need to do, close it?
Yes.
Set it up?
Yeah, a- a- actually, you would, you would not take action today, condition on the inspection being as stated.
I make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad. Any more discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, y'all are gonna, they give time set up real soon.
Today, we ain't gonna, he come from work.
Dwayne, you can do it, you can do it real soon, I appreciate it.
Just come from work to be here.
Huh?
We just come from work to be here.
Right.
So he's going, we're going back to work.
Hey, does the garbage truck run y'all down y'all way?
Yes.
Okay. They ever skip y'all?
No, they.
Okay.
Alright, Dwayne, you gonna try to do that pretty quick, okay? Y'all, and you got their number and everything, contact? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on.
For the record, that hearing is closed.
The glass out there?
Item three is the Marion White Estate Nuisance Property Consideration.
That's District One.
It's item three at four eighteen, for Seminole, District One. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate the photos, if anyone is here on behalf of Marion White Estate, they should make their way to the podium.
Oh, I know this one. Alright.
So, these pictures were taken on the eighteenth, we had received a complaint about rubbish and debris, grass and inoperable, in an inoperable vehicle. This property is located in Deer Valley.
I know all about it. It's a problem and needs to be addressed, it's not gonna, and it probably is not gonna happen very easy on its own.
Alright, these are the new pictures.
Well, they did cut the grass, or the frost got it.
Oh, frost. Frost got the grass.
Kathy did receive a call on this from the daughter-in-law. I think somebody, whoever's living there is not cooperating.
No.
So we need to go ahead and close it?
Yeah.
As soon as justice court.
I, I'll be honest with you, I'm surprised, uh, well, yes, I won't say that here. But anyway, let's just go ahead and declare the nuisance.
That hearing is closed, Jared.
Well-kept neighborhood, well-kept grandparents passed, so it's just been occupied.
Alright, I make the motion, declare nuisance.
We don't say it.
No, this, this is the actual hearing statement, so we're gonna go ahead and declare a nuisance.
Motion by Jay. Second by.
Gaines.
Steve. And no more discussion, all favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
For the record, that hearing is closed. Item four, under the nuisance considerations, is the Jason Arrington Nuisance, Nuisance Property, one seventeen Belgrave, this is District Two. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate the photos, if anyone's here on behalf of Jason Arrington, they should make their way to the podium now.
Alright, so, um, we received a complaint in September about the condition of this property. These pictures were taken on the ninth of September. It is in Belgrave subdivision, about rubbish and debris on the porch and the driveway and the grass, what's.
And it's a repeat? Look, some of the stuff look like it.
I'm not sure, I don't think it's a repeat.
It's not, nobody's here?
Nobody's here.
So.
I make a motion to say.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad, set this public.
Declare.
I mean, declare the nuisance, excuse me.
Yeah.
All favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
As President, item five, under nuisance consideration, is the Michael Bounds Nuisance Property, one nineteen Cedar Springs Circle, this is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing.
Make a motion, declare it a nuisance.
Oh, okay.
They're not here.
Say it.
Motion by Brad, second by Steve. Uh, any discussion, all favors, aye? All opposed? Okay.
If they're not here, then.
That's no discussion.
Right.
Okay. For the record, that, that hearing is closed.
Make a motion recess. Second.
Motion, motion recessed by Jay, uh, second by Steve, and recessed to win, whatever, whatever they. Anyway, all favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, be December thirtieth. Alright, now, that, that ended our planning commission meeting, uh, let's move on to our board supervisors' meeting. First on the agenda, we have a public comment with, um, Earl Byrd with ADM, Bundle Energy Solutions, creating financial solutions. Come on up, Mr. Byrd. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I mean, it's here to, it'll be here before you blink.
He said.
Hey, I did, I made motion recess. Yeah. There we go. December thirtieth. Alright.
Okay.
Earl, we're gonna give you a few minutes to.
Yep. It won't take long.
Good spiel and kind of update us and, anyway.
Alright.
You got the floor.
Yes, sir, appreciate it. Um, I want to, uh, I'm Earl Byrd with ABM and my coworker, Phil Parrish, Phil's out of Columbus and I'm right here out of, uh, out of Florence. And, uh, so what I'm hoping to do, uh, real quick, is just to reintroduce to the board a, a, a funding solution that you've considered before. So if you'll just kind of go with me on, uh, stay with me on the presentation here, it won't take long, I promise. So if you go to the second page, kind of get the progress to date, so this is, notice that, uh, the, the date there is twenty seventeen. So the board in twenty seventeen issued an, an RFQ for energy services performance contracting. And, um, and then that, and based on that RFQ, it made a selection for a company, which in, in this business is referred to as, as an ESCO, an energy service company. And, um, and then that's as far as that, uh, that progressed. And, uh, they never, never, uh, brought back to the board, uh, a developed project. And so, uh, I wanted to kind of give you just a, a reminder about what the potential is for that. So if you go to the next page, what this really is, it's a, I said, it's a funding solution, it's a, it's a financial solution. And what drives it is savings from, uh, money that the county is already spending. So the funding that is provided, um, and we'll go through it in more detail here in just a second, but the funding that is provided actually comes from money that is currently being spent. The majority of it on utilities, uh, for your buildings. So if you go to the next page with the, it's got the little graph on it, this is, this is actual Rankin County, uh, information. Now, I told you, you had made a selection and, and, uh, that company that you selected is no longer in this business. I know that, cause I used to work for them and I actually worked on this project some when I was there. So these are actual numbers. I had a question, uh, I think it was, Mr. Calhoun had asked me about, um, the, the amount of money that the county spends on utilities for your buildings. And that number is upwards of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. You had asked me that, and so the reason I say it's upwards of that, I've got a lot of that information, it's a little bit dated, but it was not all of the county's buildings, but it was the majority of the county's buildings. So, uh, with that being the case, then, I, I just applied to that what the normal level of savings that we see in a, in a, in a, uh, in this solution. And so what that comes out to be is about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year that can be used to fund upgrades in your buildings. So if you look at that over a fifteen-year term, which is kind of where most of the contracts wind up being, it can actually go to twenty years, but, uh, most of the time, the contracts settle out in about a fifteen-year term, which means that those savings have to be guaranteed by the company that's chosen, uh, based on qualifications to do the work. And, um, so if you, if you look at that over a fifteen-year period, then what's created is upward, uh, more, uh, these are conservative numbers, so it, uh, conservatively speaking, it's, it's about, uh, two point three to two and a half million dollars, uh, that can be put back into your buildings in, with improvements that actually generate these savings. So if you go, let's tell you what, let's just go to page six in the handout, give you an idea of where this comes from. These are the energy conservation measures. The ones I have in bold are the ones that I know from, from having worked on this project, uh, are in play, so to speak, for, uh, Rankin County. And, uh, you've done s- a, a small amount of, uh, lighting retrofit to go into LED, uh, lights, but there's still much.
When you say that, are you talking about the most probably?
Yes, I know y'all did that one, yes, sir.
I mean, is that what you're referring to?
Well, I, I think that in cases where, uh, in other cases in the county where, like when some of the lights go out, some of, at some point in time, I know they were doing some replacement. A light would go out, instead of putting a fluorescent back in, they'd put LED.
Okay.
But for the.
For, for, for the main, the, the most of what you're saying is.
Still fluorescent light, yes, sir.
How's that work, Ken? Matt Brune?
I don't think we done it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, how's that, have, have you seen a significant savings? Okay.
I didn't know we did it.
He's, he's. Do what?
Actually, we changed our house, the whole one up end would give out the water, problem with those lights.
Uh-huh. Okay. And that's, that's not the only, um. And then, and then one other.
This time of year, heating the building's not bad.
No, it's not, not bad at all, but in the summer it is. And, uh, but then, then the other thing, once, since we're on that subject, the other thing is there with, uh, when you go to LED lighting, now you no longer have the ballast. And so you, if you know anything about fluorescent lighting, there's always two points of failure, you got your ballast and then you got your bulb also. That goes away and you get a much longer life with LED. There's some HVAC upgrades, some older equipment that, uh, could be replaced as part of this, uh, solution. There is some, uh, upgrade potential and, uh, an expansion of some, um, HVAC controls and automation, uh, and certainly some water conservation. Now, the next, that's not all that would be evaluated, but.
Water conservation?
Yes, sir.
What is that, how's this tying to that?
Uh, any, any, any savings that can be generated, right? Savings equals funding.
Smaller tank, well, okay.
Yeah. Also.
Not just electricity?
Right, and, and also, I'd have to go back and look, and we'd do that if, if, uh, if the county elects to move forward and it, and if ABM was selected, I can tell you, we would actively evaluate it. But I know that it, uh, there's, uh, and some of your larger users are like a jail and things like that, there's some, there's some, uh, there's some energy conservation measures there that specifically related to water.
Ken, have y'all looked at that?
We've already switched my stuff out in jail.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Keep going, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, no, you interrupt all you want. But that, that's, the, the next two pages are, are, this page and the next page are just some of the, the, um, the potential ECMs, energy conservations that would be evaluated. So let's go to this, this page here, this is really the one that, uh, makes the most sense anyway. This is the process, uh, and there is a process that, and you have to adhere to, to be able to utilize this. And, um, so if you look at the, up in, in the top part of this, uh, this diagram, and everything's in the yellow, that's already been done, okay? So, um, the preliminary analysis is there, the numbers that I gave you earlier, those are, those are real numbers. Those are, those are the county's number, and again, those are conservative. I put two point three million on there, um, to give you an idea, our national average on, uh, the percent of utility savings that we generate in projects like this is twenty-three percent. But that, the problem with that number is, it includes a lot of projects that did not, that were done before LED lighting came into, uh, came into play. So when you look in the last four or five years, that number's closer to thirty percent. I just use a twenty-five percent number, uh, to, to give you that figure earlier. So one of the things I want to point out to you is that, if you look on here, it's got board approval and I've got it in three different places. And I always point that out to a governing body, uh, such as yourself, because, uh, the, the message there is that you're absolutely in control of the whole process. So you would have to, uh, board, get a board approval to re-advertise for qualifications. Then once, uh, a selection is made, it would come back to the board and you would have to, uh, approve that selection. And then when the project is developed in concert with, with the county's input, uh, then you would be able to approve the final project also. So you're absolutely in control of the process. But I also wanted to stress here is that you've, you've, you've done that in the past, you advertised, but this project just never came to fulfillment. So you would have to re-advertise, uh, in order, uh, to, uh, to engage in the process. So I'll put, the next page is just, uh, put together a timeline for you to give you an understanding of, of what, how long the process takes. And, uh, because you can't, you really can't circumvent the process, it's, it's dictated by, uh, the legislation that governs this. And, uh, so if you look at there today, I'm giving you this briefing, uh, but if the, the county elects to re-advertise, and this just would say, what if, if you did that in December? Then, then this is what the timeline would look like, this is realistic, you would be able to make a selection in, in February.
Oh. You can ask him, he'll tell you, he's all right, too.
Who had the contract?
Well, it wasn't a contract, but it was selected, McNeil Rhodes was selected.
They just, they, uh, dissolved the company, I think.
But do we? Do we benefit from that contract prior to this? I mean, not contract, but whatever. Did we pay them?
I'll be honest with you, I don't.
We don't pay them either.
No.
We don't pay them anything.
You don't.
Explain.
Okay.
Explain, explain about.
Continue then, once we get past, we don't have to pay anything, continue.
Let's, let's go back to here, Dan, real quick. So if you go there, where, if you go back to the green there, where you had board approval on the selection.
Yep.
Uh, that's, that's the last thing that was done. And then they begin what's, what's called then the investment grade audit, uh, but they never, never brought that forward for consideration.
Before it costs the county.
You are gonna bring us a plan if we say yes and tell us what we need to do and how much it's gonna cost.
That's correct. That's correct.
But, but it's not, tell them about the cost.
Uh, there is-
That's what I think is what you're trying to get at.
Yeah, there's no upfront cost, okay? I, I can tell you that for most companies, and, and this probably happened in the past, where it says letter of intent there, once you, because you're selecting on qualifications, much like you would do if you were selecting a professional service like engineering. So you select a company based on their qualifications, and then you, at that point in time, you enter into most time a letter of intent. And what that letter of intent says is that the county's gonna provide for us the information and we'll work with the county, we'll co-author the solution, which, and, and if we bring you a project that meets the qualification according to the legislation, which means it has to be budget neutral. And what I mean by budget neutral is-
I think I know.
You're not gonna be more, spending more than what you're spending now, okay? And so most of those letter of intents though, what ours would, would have what's called a break fee in there, which would say this, that if we, if we expend the resources and everything to develop the project and we bring it to you and it meets the economic qualifications that it has to meet, and then for some reason, another, the board said, no, we don't wanna do that, then, then you would owe us some amount of money for the engineering and everything that was involved in it. I've never seen that come into play because, especially now with LED lighting being the, one of the major drivers, you have a project. There's just no, no way around that.
And we're looking at a year.
No, um-
From now?
Well, somewhat, not, not quite.
I mean, to bring to, to-
Actually start doing something.
Yeah, if you advertise, and if you advertise in December, you can make a selection, I put in February, you can actually make the selection for your company in January.
And you're talking about every building that we have?
Yes, any, any building where the county's paying utilities on.
And, okay.
Yeah. Then you should have, if you, if you follow this timeline, you should have a, a project for consideration and approval in June. Um, and if that, then you started implementing that in July, then, you know, probably a six to eight month installation. And then the, the way the financing is arranged though, and this is important, the way the financing is arranged, whenever the project is completed and the, and the guarantee on the savings start, everything's implemented, so the county is seeing the savings that have to be guaranteed by the, the company that you select. The financing is arranged so that your first payment on that, which has to be covered by the savings, doesn't start till eight months to a year out. And that way the county accrues the savings before they ever have to, to actually start, you know, paying the, paying for the project.
Are y'all doing this somewhere else?
Yeah. We are, right now, we've got several schools under contract right now, or in the process of being under contract or in contract. We were selected recently in DeSoto County, we're developing a project there, and in Simpson County, we're developing a project there.
We're bigger and better than DeSoto. Every time, it's like, whether it's road or water or-
You get that?
I'm playing.
But you've done, so you, you're with Simpson County now?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I-
Yep. So we, we just started developing a week ago.
You president. I'd like to investigate more. We do have a maintenance department that we may can, should be able to offset some of the cost of what he's talking about. I understand we don't have the expertise on the front end. Can you work with our county staff, our maintenance and things, and not hammer us too hard if we were to go?
So, so-
Or, or, or let's just say the weight of the hammer not be as much.
So, so we, uh, we absolutely work with, and, and I was working with your department here when, when we had started to develop this. So we absolutely work with your folks to develop the project. What we don't do is get all the information, go off and develop a project and then come down and, and lay it out in front of me, say, here it is, you need to approve this. We don't do that, that's why I use the term co-author in there. And so as we develop that project, we'll, we'll have input, their input is most valuable. And so what we usually do is we'll develop three or four options for you to consider, and then you, you pick from that. Now, we're the contractor on the work, okay? So we don't, we don't, we don't get, do anything until the project is approved and the financing is-
The labor, the actual labor?
Yes sir.
Who does that?
Uh, we do. And, and we, we'll, we'll do that. We'll self-perform some of it.
Only problem that I, I mean, I understand the savings.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we, we're trying to do that at our farm, move to LED, anything we can. Mike and the sheriff, which are probably two of the biggest energy users in the county, I mean, for us, county government, have been moving, and, and they have used their own labor-
That's right.
-to do what you're, one end of what you're talking about. They don't have the expertise upfront.
Right.
Can we work that out?
Um-
Or do you have to have all of it?
Well, see, see here's the-
Because we're already paying these guys. I mean, or either they're in jail, I mean-
Right. Right. But you, but the, the difference there is that when, in a project like this, once the, once the final scope of work is approved in a contract-
Yep.
-and, and, and the pricing is all assembled and that's all part of it, again, it has to be covered, it has to be paid for by the savings, okay? So that's, it goes back to the budget neutral part of it.
We're not paying anything.
It has to be, at least be budget neutral. But the reality is, you, you do have maintenance folks, but you're, you're not staffed to where you could do this all at one time like is done in these projects. Because when you do that, you don't have to wait till maybe three, four years out or whatever, however long it would take you at your current staffing level to be able to implement something. Because you're talking about in, in all the buildings, you know? If you, if you do it like you're supposed to-
So it's covered, the, the installation and all that is, would be covered as accumulated in-
Under the savings.
On the savings. But the way to do that is go like hog wild, just go out and get, fix everything needs fixing so you can start seeing the savings part. So if you kind of piecemealed it and said, well, we're gonna let them do this, you'd never be seeing the savings.
Two tours today and five next month.
That's right.
But you, you're not, it's not costing you, the way I understand it, it's not costing you to do it because the savings, and you guarantee that, that those savings will pay for the improvement.
That's correct. That's correct.
So that's the reason, I see, they kind of handle it all, because there's no way to give you a, I guess, a credit for savings if you had some inmates or trustees doing some of it, because it needs to be all at one time.
So what is the time, what is the life of the, in order to recoup your expense?
Well, it would depend on the final scope of work. That would be-
How much?
That would be decided, but, um-
What's the average?
Average, ask me the question again.
The time of recouping your money?
Um, the, the average payback on a project is probably in the eight to 10-year range. Again, it depends on what, what all's done.
About 10 years?
Because what, because what you're doing is, you're taking, you're taking different energy conservation measures, some that have really quick paybacks, some that have longer paybacks, and you're blending them together so that you can get a, at least a budget neutral or positive cash flow compared to what you're currently spending.
What was the max that you could give with energy, that the, the plan they had when we originally did this?
Um-
30% or what?
Well, I, I said that our, our average project now, especially in the last five years, is, is right at 30% of what-
I mean, when we started this, there was a, some grant money to get reimbursement from energy.
And that's still in, that's still, they have a, Entergy has a, what's called their business solution, division, what it is, is it's a rebate based on the amount of conservation you do. We're, we're one of their allies on that. So what we, the way we do that is, we submit everything that is done in the project to Entergy, whatever rebate that comes out of their program, we just give that straight to the customer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
The cap, the cap on that is $50,000 now.
$50,000, okay.
It used to be 100, they changed it to 50 now, so, but, but yeah, you would, Rankin County would qualify and be able to max out on that, so that would just be a $50,000 rebate back to the county. But it would be, the work that's done would, would qualify for that.
We get the rebate?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
$50,000. It caps at 50 now. It was 100.
50 a year over?
No, just 50 for a project, per tax, per federal tax ID.
Mike? Ken? Ken? Will y'all help me here? I know, I mean, y'all aren't, I know y'all aren't up here and I'm putting you on the spot, but y'all use a lot of energy between you two.
I was just talking to our maintenance guy over there, we're about 30% LED in our jail. I mean-
How'd we get there?
Y'all give us money in our bucket.
No, 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 no. But we hadn't done a contract with someone-
To replace what's old, up to date stuff.
So what happens now, all our bulbs and stuff, when they go out, we're replacing those with LED. If we have a problem with a fixture, then we replace the whole thing and just go completely LED.
But we're, we budgeted, basically, we budgeted and already paid for it.
So you can take, I didn't even know, you can take a T8 bulb and put it in here?
Well, you put, you put a LED and replace it with a T8.
Yeah, they have-
You know what I'm talking about, Mike? A T8?
Yeah.
You can do that?
I can do a T8.
Okay.
That'd be your LED bulb.
Hey, why don't, why don't we sit down with maybe Keith next week at some point and, and run it through all them and just have that general discussion and then come back on the 15th and Keith can give us an overview of kind of where we're at. You can kind of see where we were in 17, let you do some research on it and then come back and-
What are you, what are you gonna, what will you look for to say what we were at 17?
Well, I think, well, I think Keith's process would be simply just to go back to 17 and see what deal we had with the, what'd you say, what was the name of the company?
McNeil Rhodes.
McNeil Rhodes. And understand the agreement, maybe that was there. Craig, you can probably also be a part of that as well and see where we were, because we had to put out an RFP last time, right?
Put out a request of qualification, yes sir.
Yeah, so we did that last time, so we would have something similar, the same conversation and see if it's a feasible thing. You can also talk to the sheriff and, and Mike and figure out whether we want to go down there. But we could talk about this for 50 minutes in here and not have a better understanding of where we're at, at the end of it, so.
Well, you're, you're right, but we, now we got something that I never really understood the other one completely because it never was explained to us as, as you've explained it here today.
I'm just saying-
Other, before.
To me, it's a good thing to do.
Yeah.
All the discussions, uh, before coming in here, so we, we can have a more clear shot of it.
One thing that I think, I like, the fact that I didn't realize, we're budgeting basically to replace them now, and we're paying for it, just like what he said. He's 30% done, but we've already, we, we're actually paying for it, so looking at this other way, it should be paying for itself.
That's right. And it doesn't, and the other important fact from a financial standpoint is that the work that's done in here does not impact your capital budget. So everything that's done under here doesn't come out of your capital budget.
The, the program seeks to obtain a better pricing model to do this retrofit by doing it all at one time. If we have to do it over 15 years, then the individual cost for each fixture is at a much higher price point than if we do all 1,500 fixtures at one time.
Craig, I may have sounded negative. I'm just sitting on the other end and picking it. I would like to gather more information.
Right.
I, I think it's something that maybe the county can benefit from.
Yes.
Uh, Jared's the president, so I'll leave it up to him.
I'm really curious, and I mentioned this-
I want to hear it.
Yeah, one, one question I think we would have on our side, the admin side, would be, uh, give more, give us more information, a little bit better explanation of this financing arrangement. That's something that we probably need to delve into and understand a little better.
Right.
That's one. And the second thought that I have is that perhaps if we dust off the old RFQ and it looks like that it's, it's the direction that the board may want to consider, we might be in a position on the 15th to have something for y'all to look at as far as RFQ is concerned.
Well, that'd be good. And then Keith, you can get his information if you've got some questions about it. Ms. Law, she's maybe probably up to date on some, back then and so-
Because I think in 17, we all agreed that we wanted to do it. And if we headed down that road, let's go back to that and figure out-
Don't take this as negative.
I'm not.
Questions you have, Keith-
I'm not.
-y'all may have, then he, he could answer them, so.
But that don't mean we're on both parts. I'm playing, I'm playing.
I, I will tell you this, just real quick on the financing, 90-plus percent of the project, you can, you can finance them in different ways. 90, the vast majority of projects utilize a tax-exempt operating lease. And I can tell you on, that I put on here that I know because I have your utility data, this is, this is a real project number, potential. And we just, we just got financing on a project with that tax-exempt operating lease for 15 years at 2.03%.
So, that, that was why I was curious, how, how did the financing, in essence, the APR release rate in this case, how did that compare to what we would be able to secure on our own, understand, whether or not we could get 15 to 20 years amortization on what amounts to personal property?
No, it, it, yeah, you, you, you can't, we, we have, we have, they, they recently changed the legislation to go to 20 years max. It used to be 15 for a long, all the surrounding states had gone to 20 already. Federal government actually goes 25. And, but yeah, we, we have a project right now that they elected to do a 20-year finance and is still in, below 3%.
Yeah.
So-
That's the same one?
Yeah.
Oh, he wants to go today and say, I don't know.
He wants to talk about the Lake Harbor today. I don't know if Brad was gonna talk about your station.
Okay.
All right.
That's, that's what confused me.
Yeah.
Because I thought it was two.
It is, they're, they're-
Okay, it's two now, okay.
No.
All right, that's something totally different, they jumped out of the gate. Anyway, I guess any more questions? I think we kind of got some, uh, direction, direction which kind of work with, and I don't think the board had any more questions. I appreciate it. And like I say, Keith and any of them that have any questions, be in contact, make sure they have your contacts.
The only, the only thing I'll leave with you is that, that is that it is a process, it does take the time. You have to do that. The sooner you can start that process by advertising, the sooner you can get companies in-
The sooner checks written.
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, well, the savings begin. But, uh, it, you know, it does take a certain amount of time to do that. And so I'm gonna give you my call and I'll give you a copy of this, too. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions, don't hesitate to call.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Slade?
Yes, sir. First item under my section of the work section agenda is the discussion of and potential action authorized, communication to the Association of Supervisors on behalf of the Board of Supervisors indicating favor for the 2021 legislative proposals and authorization of the Board President to execute the document. If you'll look, uh, first couple of pages after the agenda page, you'll see the legislative proposals that are listed there for MAS, and we've, we have looked through those proposals on your behalf and vetted those. There may have been a question about proposal five, I think that we answered that question.
Yeah.
So all, all we need is authorization of the Board President to indicate to MAS that we're in favor of their latest legislative agenda.
So, Luke?
All right, motion by Jay, second by Daniel. Any discussion? All favors are aye. All vote?
Next item under my section, gentlemen, is an update on the, uh, what, what is listed there as a federal effort. That's just a kind of a global category. Uh, if you guys will recall, you asked for, uh, some, some additional information on exactly what, uh, would the, would the team, uh, our folks with Wagner, our folks with Bernini, what exactly would they be doing, uh, in this interim phase of about three months? Uh, the, the proposal as presented originally did not have a lot of detail with respect to the actual budget, how that broke down, and the timeline at the time actually began in November. Of course, here we are in December now, so the timeline needs to be adjusted. What I'm going to hand you, uh, is a detail of the actual budget request.
Do you want us to read this before we go any further?
All I want you to do is read, really?
I'll just say, it'll take me a minute.
Go to the far right under the first paragraph.
Yep, I see it. I see it.
That's the number you need to look at. And if you look at the bottom of the, uh, the top of the second page on the far right.
We'll see that the, uh, if you include the travel related expenses, um, and, and the reason that that is broken out and segregated like that is because there is still uncertainty as to whether or not our guys can get access in DC to the delegation. And, uh, although there are some workarounds that are, are being looked at, uh, it's unclear at this point exactly how that's going to ultimately play out. That's out of our hands. Uh, when the Senate and the House both pass, uh, continuing resolutions that prohibit outside third party contacts with staffers and with congressional delegation, uh, that's out of our hands at that point. And so it's unclear. So you can look through this at your convenience. Essentially, it's the same number as previously that got us to the point of filing a seven thousand and one application through the Corps. That has been completed. Uh, you contracted and paid for that service. That is in place. This is the follow-up that will allow us to continue that discussion with appropriate agency contacts, both at the Corps and at our, in our CS. As you guys know, this is an effort primarily, primarily that relates to our stormwater management plan that it, that has already been implemented and is in the planning and development phase. And this is the, this is the effort that is underway, a part of that program, to help find federal partners who can come alongside and help us to take care of the revenue funding side of the equation. And that's going to require some concerted effort. And, uh, the, the opinion of the professionals is that this is an appropriate time, this transition phase, although intuitively you would think, you're wasting your time here. There's nobody in place. We don't know where things head, uh, you would think. Uh, but the guys that are supposed to know how this works are telling us that now is the time for Rankin County to be front and center, having strategic conversations. Uh, and so that, that is why this effort is, is underway. Um, I will also mention to you that as a part of this push to have conversations, um, your team intends to discuss, in addition to this work, it's not on your page, but at no additional cost, the team is going to focus some efforts on what is known as build grants. That's the old tiger programs that y'all remember from acronym days. They're now referred to as build grants. And this would relate to, uh, strategic discussions about any number of road improvement projects and funding at federal level that could be made available for road improvement projects. That's on top of stormwater and that is just simply taking advantage of an opportunity that while we're having conversations, strategic conversations, we want to mention both of those.
I thought we already proved all this, that Daniel was going to go.
That, that we did. That was back in the, um, I guess, late spring.
Yeah.
Late spring or something like that. And it just never took fruition because of COVID, everything shut down. You couldn't get in the, those areas. So it, it's just kind of got to a point, it came, I guess, maybe a month or so ago and had the same discussion.
That's right. Six weeks ago, roughly.
And my answer to that was, give us a detailed plan of what you want to do. They were wanting, I think we authorized fifty thousand dollars back in the time.
Originally.
Yeah.
They've gone through that. And now, in order to get more money, they had to come back to us with a detailed plan. So this is an additional funding side of that.
That's right.
I think to continue to do work.
Well, we never spent the fifty though.
No, see, we, we spent the fifty to get the seven thousand and one.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, they spent it.
They already spent it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was to get the seven thousand and one application completed and filed and positioned. It's in place now. Waiting on an allocation at this point.
I wouldn't wear that.
This is the work.
Fifty was gonna, during that period is when you were going. I didn't know they were, had spent it and now we're going to come back for more.
No, the original, the original concept plan was to get the seven thousand and one application completed and filed. And that work has been done. There was discussions about going to DC.
Yeah, I know.
But that never came to be.
But I didn't know we, we were going. We're going to keep coming back to the well, in my opinion.
Well, I, I guess, I guess that's kind of, I guess that's kind of the thing. The, to me, the board's kind of at a position to where if you think the stormwater management program's important.
Yeah.
Do we, yes or no? I mean, because if we don't think it's important, because this is Richland Creek and all this stuff down here.
You can fund the money, keep funding money, not getting the results.
It's important.
Sorry?
I'm at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, well, they keep funneling the money, but we're not seeing anything. How long we do that?
Uh, that's the board's discretion. That's, that's, that's the.
Goes on and on and on.
Well, it's a work in progress, you know? It doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah, as long as you keep paying, you keep working, right? Yeah.
I don't know. Me personally, I'm in favor of doing it. So I, I think it's important. We've been sticking our head in the sand for a lot of years.
I, I have very, very little ground that this actually comes. However, if this don't go, then none of my areas that flood are going to get attention. Uh, that's what, I mean, normally I would say, no, heck no, I'm not giving Brad, Jared my money, but, uh.
Well, I think, I think at the end of the day, it could cost us a lot of money. But I guess the thing is, we're, we're.
I mean, up to, up to then, all the study stuff I'm getting at.
Something, if it's your house that floods, it's very important. Uh.
Oh, what do you think, Dan?
I'm.
I mean.
Golly, I'm sitting, I mean, I'm in the middle.
Kind of dollars are we talking about?
Right here, fifty, fifty-five thousand.
No, you're talking about like in the whole thing?
The programming.
We said fifty. Now, what are we looking at to, to just keep some more energy going? That's what sounds.
That's, that's what this is. This is the detailed plan that shows what they're going to do with the next fifty thousand. That's what that is right there. Now, this is, this is a, this is a timeframe on here. It says, November first through March first is, is game plan. So basically by quarters roughly, they're coming out and projecting out.
I would say that this proposal would relate to a time period from roughly next week until the end of March, middle of April. In essence, the first quarter is what you're talking about, this particular effort. Now, it may extend beyond that if some of the strategic meetings have to be set later for reasons that are beyond our control. Uh, but, but it would be included, inclusive of what you're approving as far as the budget is concerned.
There's, there's, there's one thing that ties this whole thing together for me. And, and I know it feels like we're chasing money or chasing a rabbit down a hole with it. And, and we may be to a certain point and it, Democrats are notoriously famous for spending money on government projects like this. I'm just going to say it probably, well, I shouldn't say it, but here it comes. They're, they're going to blow money on areas of government that probably Republican mindset wouldn't spend it on. Now you've got a, a Democratic president, it looks like, and a Democratic House, that if they're going to pump money into projects.
You are exactly right. It's coming now.
I, I don't want to sit back and say, just because I don't agree with it, that we don't go fight for our share of the money of it. So with that being said, though, it appears to the eye that, hey, we, we don't have control of anything. We couldn't get anything when we had total control of all of it. When Trump went in, we had the Senate and the House, we couldn't get any money, the way we tried and fought. And we had to, so now we've got a group of people in there that believe a little differently than we do. And I say, we being the Republican side of things, which everybody up here sits on that platform. If they're going to blow money, then I'd like to get out there and try to find our share of it to get it. I don't know whether they will or not.
Because we paid it. We are the ones that put it there.
It's our money. It's our money.
Yeah, it's our money. Just give it back.
I, I don't have a problem with this next segment getting us to March to kick the tires on this side and see if it makes some fruit. But if we don't get traction on it and we can't get something in front of us to say, hey, we, we, we got this for this.
Yeah.
Then we have the discussion in March to say, what do we do from here? That, that's, Jay, that's my spin.
Well, that's, that's mine. That's my, that was my thing.
Both of y'all have the most ground.
And we got a meeting tomorrow.
Well, I. I can't. I mean, when somebody calls you and they got a foot of water in their house, there's no words. I can't say I'm sorry enough when they're ma, I mean, they're hurting and they're mad and I understand. Even though the county didn't put it there and didn't cause it, and I can't say we're doing this. I'm doing this. We got a plan. We're, I need to have, I need to fix that.
We have several key areas. Richland Creek's one of them. Mill Creek's one of them. We got some areas off the old fence inside of the reservoir side. We have some serious areas that it's all in one big package. And I, I don't.
We can't get to those places until we get past this.
That's correct. That's correct. So, so.
Yeah, so the money that is available at the federal level is not accessible just because you hold your hand up and, and you send them a, you send them, you send them a media report about a house flooding. It doesn't just drop in your lap. There has to be strategic conversations and efforts. And, and part of the strategy here, guys, is to not just continue to ping our delegation only.
Yeah.
So many of these efforts revolve around going to DC and getting in front of who they think is the right decision maker on a project. You can't do it that way.
Well, see, I, and, and that's where, and that's what's gotten me up in kind of the spin of it all. Before, it was hard, if, if, if the Republicans in DC were being conservative with our money, it's hard to find those projects. But the Democrats are going to spend money studying dolphins out in the Gulf, you know, and thousands of, I mean, all kind of crazy stuff. So if we can tag into some of these projects, then that's the route, I think. So that's me through here through March.
So what I want you to. You got it. And, and you're all over it. You're all over the target. If you'll look through these itemized accounts, when you have time to look through them, if you'll look through the itemization of the tasks, what will stick out to you is that much of the work involves contacts at the agency level.
Yeah.
Okay? That's why so little of this proportionally relates to whatever needs to happen in DC.
We are not hiring a lobbyist.
That's correct. That's correct. That's exactly right.
Right? All right. I, I don't, I do not.
That's correct. These are your professionals.
The difference in this, Steve, is we're going out on a specific mission.
Yep.
Some of the general lobbying fees where people say, hey, look, let me go out and see if I can find you something. Well, basically, well, and that's kind of what we said we wanted from our, if a group's going to do lobbying for us, we basically said, go find me a specific project that we can address and then we'll, we'll, we'll jump down the hole with you.
My former congressman.
But don't go fishing.
Is going to be in the loop if we're going to be hiring a lobbyist.
Right. So, uh, full disclosure, uh, you're not paying, but you're going to get some of that service, Steve, when they start communicating with strategic partners about bill grants, because that's not part of your stormwater.
Right.
You, you guys have already spoken on stormwater. You said, you know what? We think enough about this as an issue that we have to solve, that we're going to hire Wagner to conduct a very expensive operation to get us a strategy and plan together. You did that. That's already done. It's in writing. We have it. We can present it.
Well, I know. I mean, and, and I, I think we have all said, we spent this money for this plan. Now what are we going to do with it?
Precisely.
We just plan, plan, plan? But this is, okay.
You're already implementing it. You, you may not feel that at the granular level yet, but it's already being implemented. We, we'd like to get some help paying for it.
This is lobbying money. This is task money on these projects.
It is, but it's still, it's in a sense. It's just, it is still lobbying in some way. So they're working this the same way.
They're certainly making requests for help.
Yeah, right.
Because that's always seen. Because that's always seen. That's right.
And, and you know, and who knows? Come back in March.
Well, and, and I guess, and I guess that's my, that's my thought on the November to March plan. Let them see if the transition team is going to do what the Democrats think they, or say they're going to do. If they're going to blow money on Oyster studies, then let's jump in and see if we can get money for Rankin County.
Can we call it the December to April plan since we're already in December now?
January to June.
January.
We need, we need a vote on this.
Yeah, so, so Dan, uh, Jared, you've, you've got, you've got it listed as an update. What I would like to see you guys consider doing is adding to your agenda action to authorize the implementation of this budget and authorize your professionals to undertake these responsibilities on the budget and add that as an item and then approve it.
So that'll be, that'll be my motion to add.
All right, a motion to add that description to the agenda.
Jay second.
Jay seconded. Jay seconded.
The, uh, by Daniel, second by Jay. Any more discussion? All favors a aye. All oppose? All, most approve?
Then with the same thing, a motion to approve that.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jay. All favors a aye. All oppose? Okay.
Mr. President, if I could indulge you guys and ask you.
Makes my stomach hurt, but.
If, if I could get y'all to add one item, this is a little bit of house cleaning for us. Uh, I need you guys to approve the November the sixteenth, twenty twenty board meeting minutes for me, uh, have that item added and then approve the board meeting minutes from the sixteenth meeting.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion approved.
We, we overlooked it.
No, sir. But usually you do that at your first Monday. I'm asking you to do it today because we have the matter of the DEQ, uh, proceeding, uh, against Gold Coast. Uh, and they are in the middle of document production in those, and, and they need our minutes where you authorize the, uh, the board attorney.
Okay.
To communicate with DEQ about that pending permit.
All right. Motion second added.
Okay, motion by Jay.
He can do the motion and second.
Yeah, motion added by, was Jay who seconded? Steve. All right, all favors a aye. All oppose? Okay. Most approve by Jay, second by Steve. All favors a aye. All oppose? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. President.
All right, Keith X.
Come on now.
Yeah.
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, first item is to renew the county's medical insurance with Blue Cross and Blue Shield and, uh, Reunion Serious America Insurance Company as the reinsurance, uh, with Agent Mickey Watkins and authority for me to sign those contracts and agreements.
So move.
Second.
Most approved by Daniel, second by, uh, Jay.
Any other discussion? Keith?
You got anything else?
I have no other discussion.
I'm not going to do it.
All right, all favors a aye.
Oh, I'm, I'm for it.
Hey.
Yes.
Next item is authority to, uh, this is related to the Rankin County Health Department, uh, building renovations through the state, state health department. And this is the authority to enter into an agreement with the state health department to, uh, administer that renovation.
So move, according to Greg signed off on everything.
Yes, and.
What is this?
If you recall, we had the state health department director of, uh, of their physical plant operations come. They need to modify, I think they're having to move out of one facility. And so they're having to modify an existing, uh, building that's owned by the county and they need our permission to do the renovation work that's required.
We're not paying for it.
We, we're not paying for it. It's being paid for by federal funds and they're also going to reimburse the county, uh, four thousand dollars for our effort and energy to have to administer this thing on their behalf. So we're, we're covered and I'm satisfied that everything's good.
Good.
Okay.
We had a motion already, didn't we?
Yeah.
That second.
Motion, motion by Daniel. Who made it?
I did.
Jay and Steve.
He jumped in there, huh?
Oh, you got.
I second.
All right, second by Steve. All favors a aye. All oppose?
And the last item is the, uh, agenda attached for your review.
I don't think we have to have a motion or anything on that.
For our December seventh meeting. Any questions?
I will not be here, so.
Ask your questions now.
Yeah. All right. Additional business to be discussed. I mean, there's nothing else you had to keep, anything. Additional business to be discussed. Uh, I got a couple of things to add down toward the end. Let's go ahead. Uh, first we have our mayor, Pat Sullivan, Richland. Come up and I hope you've enjoyed your, uh, sit-in today.
Look, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. Um, let's just say I was having flashbacks to my board meeting on Tuesday. So I want y'all to know, going through the nuisance property and everything, we do an exact same thing, okay? Every, every, every two weeks, uh.
I like your coat.
Well, thank you, thank you. Um, absolutely, every two weeks. My wife has excellent taste.
Somebody does. Pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, pedestrian bridge.
Little Brad's going to like that.
There, there you go.
Um, um, I, I'd like to, when I'm, there's an issue, and if y'all will go through that little packet there, get to the pictures. And in there, this is something, when I originally took office in two thousand seventeen, we, we'd started to, that's when they started the Highway forty-nine project. I immediately went to Commissioner Dick Hall to, uh, voice my concern about the children crossing the road there in front of the school. The school's been there since the eighteen hundreds, all right? So it's been there for a long time. People have been walking to school for a long time. And, uh, so we, we tried to, to get that in the part of the project of the new forty-nine expansion, uh, at. Uh, the commissioner was telling me, Pat, 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 we, their funds are not available here, blah, 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 on and on and on. I'm gonna like, children are gonna get killed, people are gonna get killed. Just go ahead and get this, get this, get this settled. He finally, I finally said, well, you're gonna have to give me a, a letter of endorsement telling me that there is a need for that. And you will see that in, in your packet there where the commissioner did, did say, hey, it, it would be safer for a bridge to be, to be placed over 49. Um, so, uh, after running into a brick wall there trying to get funding to get that, that, and during, during the 49 widening project, uh, I was told to go to, or advised to go through the bond process with the, with the state. Uh, in meeting with Senator Kirby and Harkins and Kaufman and Tom Weathersby, they advised me to go in and put together a group of people, our, our, our Rankin County people, in order to, uh, show support for the project. I ran an ad in the paper along, uh, a while back, uh, asking for support of, of the project. And I've, I've got that. And, and our citizens of City of Richland are for the project. Uh, we are planning on, uh, what the commissioner, I mean, what, uh, the senator did tell me was, he says, Pat, this is a great opportunity to go ahead and do it. And of course, we know where, where Dean Kirby's sitting right now. So that's a, that's a great, a great way of, yeah, so hey, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and get it going. Um, uh, if y'all would look at the pictures there, there are some, some roads of some pedestrians, pedestrian ways there. One of them's in Foley, Alabama. And if you've been to the beach lately, that's the one there that goes up and over. It has a small footprint. That's the one that we're, that I'm looking at. It had, does not have a ramp. It actually has two elevators in it, all right? So there won't be a, a long ramp occupying more space. I don't have any space on 49. Um, well, um, so that's, that one's there. And there's one in Snowden being built in, uh, South Haven, right, right now. That one's in, going on right now. I have hired, we have hired, the City of Richland's hired, uh, uh, an architect to go in and start drawing up the plans for this to give us really hard numbers. Since they're currently using, uh, we're using, uh, three to five million dollars right now is what the cost, estimated cost is, uh, for the project right now. I'm thinking we'll be able to get it down, down to about 3.5 million as soon as I get the hard numbers in. Um, now, we are talking about fiscal year 2022. All right? So I'm getting in, way in advance of it. But as you well know, if you're going for bond money, I've got to start now with the legislature in order for me to get to that point. Okay? So time is of the essence. And I know we're talking about 2022, but I've got to start now in order to get on the list to be able to, to go there. It also gives you the opportunity to put it on multiple budget years if, if I can get some monetary support for the project. Uh, as y'all well know, the, the projects, uh, this is a bridge, so it would definitely fall under road, road and bridge. It's a pedestrian rate. It's a public safety issue also. So, um, it's things that, that, that I was advised, advised, asked for in, in that project. Um, I am going the ninth, I'll be going to the Rankin County Board of Supervisor. I mean, I'm doing that today.
Won't be everybody be there.
There, I'm here now. Um, going to the, uh, uh, school district to ask for their participation. There's, uh, Dr. Townsend's already given me a letter. I'm trying to get into, into their back pocket, uh, come the, uh, the ninth. So we're, we're gonna get, uh, as much support. City of Richland should be about, uh, our, our, the monies that we're pledging, uh, the, up to $500,000 toward the project. What I'm trying to do is to get everybody skin in the game. The lieutenant governor also said, Pat, that in order for these things to, to get traction, he's got, I've got to show unilateral support for the project. So what I'm asking, uh, is if I can get some road and bridge monies to be pledged toward the project in the 2022 road and bridge, uh, 2022 budget year. Um, and then, and as I said, time is of the essence. I need to get our commitments in place before, before January of this year in order for to get on the list for the, for the bond monies there, therefore, uh, to, to be able to go forward, even get it in place in 2022. Um, as you see, uh, I, I know of eight people that have been killed on 49.
Crossing the road here?
Crossing the road on 49. We are adding, we are adding more lanes. Uh, and I was on the way to the doctor, and let me give you an example of what's about to happen. If you've been on I-55 North, going, going north.
49? Or 55?
I said I-55. If you're going north on I-55, would you want to walk across I-55?
Not.
Not. That's how many lanes are gonna be in front of a school in the City of Richland. So I'm, I'm, I'm begging you, please, to participate in this project in order to save a life, because the children are gonna walk. We already asked them, please don't walk to school. As you well know, dealing with public, you can't stop them, all right? So I think it's in the best interest is to provide them an avenue to, to protect her, protect themselves. Um, it would be, um, if I could, if I could get some participation, I would greatly, greatly appreciate it. And to save a life, I think this would be a small drop in the bucket for someone.
It's certainly important. And he's, and he's right, this, and he, most any day, it looks like, um, an evacuation south.
That's exactly right.
Fourth of south, the south particularly.
Now, I, the, the pictures that were taken there, y'all have gotten a phone call from a, 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 a young, I mean, a young, haha, a person standing outside taking picture of children crossing the street. That would be me, uh, do, doing that. Um, during the sporting events, that, that they flood out of the gymnasium and cross over, not even at the intersection.
Are you gonna have, are you planning to put a stairwell to it also?
It will be, it will have, the one in Foley has a stairwell that goes, wraps, wraps around the little tower that's there. And there's an elevator ADA in the, on either side.
Why do you ask that?
Well, you just said kids are gonna flood out of there.
The kids are gonna flood out there.
Years from that. Are you gonna have a stairwell?
Yeah. There definitely will be a stairwell and also have an elevator.
Yeah.
You know? And of course, you know, M.DOT, one of the first things, who's gonna maintain it? I said, well, you know, the city originally gonna be maintained. So, um, so I really would like some participation.
Can we, can we sign without a dollar mark?
Well, I'm, I need something. What I, what I would really like would be a letter of endorsement, saying that you approved the project.
Yep. That's what I'm talking about.
A pledge up to an amount. You know what up to means, right?
Yeah.
A pledge up to an amount. And that way, I can go to the legislature and give a letter of commitment here. That we're pledging up to this, okay? Uh, we won't know the hard number until I have an engineered design, okay? And, you know, I'm not gonna spend, you know, thousands of dollars on.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Until I have, and until we have some commitment is what I, what I need. I have, I have the, the preliminary information, so I'm, I'm going forward with that. But this is a, this is a.
So the lieutenant governor told you, you have to get, uh, more, more money to the table in order for him to.
Or more people to the table.
It's people and money.
People and money. Uh, it was Philip Gunn and the lieutenant.
Both of them?
Both of them were saying, Pat, here's how this is going to look before the legislature.
Because I know you, and Jared, I would say, I would vote for a letter of endorsement. I'd have to listen to you and Jared Moore before I say a dollar mark.
Yeah. On, on your dollar mark, we're pledging up to 500, $500,000.
Y'all are a rich community.
We, 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 we are, are not, we are a small town. But, but I will tell you this, we do, we do. Richland. We do have.
Compare that with Pisgah.
There you go. Then poke it. You're, you're absolutely correct.
Pisgah.
Pisgah.
Sandhill. We don't know the difference. There's a sandhill.
Hey, Pat, that one, that one in, uh, South Haven, this picture there, did, did the state contribute any for that?
That, that one is fully privately funded.
Okay.
And that, that's.
Fully private?
Private.
Privately funded. The city, the city is participating, but it was other, other funds that went into that.
Casino money and that.
Where is it at?
The one in, the.
Oh, casino.
Is it a ballpark?
I, I don't know. Gateway Drive, Gateway Drive or something like that was there. Uh, the one in, the one in Foley, Alabama, was done by a tiger grant. We were talking earlier about a tiger grant.
Across the highway to their casino.
No, this is South Haven, though.
Yeah, I know, but you know where, you know what casinos are up there, or how that money can flow out to the Soto County.
Y'all wanna have a creek or river, is that what you mean, put a casino in?
Yeah, look, I got a Pearl River right there in Richland. Just put one in. No, no.
And I could build it.
That's a fact. Um, but I do not have those resources to be able to, to get that. And I, I, I can pledge some, but I, my budget's nowhere near what South Haven's is, you know? So, I mean, there's nowhere, I mean, I'm not even a drop in the bucket of what they are.
Yeah.
You know, um.
We know where some of their money comes from.
Right. So, um, that would be, that would be, I, I would love to have your letter of endorsement to go forward. I really need a pledge. If I, if I, and I'm on, and I'm gonna put y'all to a number, but I'm, I'm gonna ask your, your numbers people to get you, get you, get you a number. Um, I, I also want to tell y'all too, coming in, in January, we'll be having a ribbon cutting for Spell Drive. It should be struck by then, and we'll be able to, to get, get.
Is that the bridge that we did for you?
Yes, that is correct. That is the bridge that you did.
Oh, serious?
Hey.
It is, though.
I don't come to you unless I partner with you, and I partner with that one in the school district did too. So we all went together and did it. So that's, that's the way government needs to work, is we all, we're all, we're all in this together. So I, I appreciate it, you know? So I.
Are you looking to, to ask for the same level of commitment from each of the just.
I am.
Entities?
I am.
Asking this board to, to step ahead of somebody else's commitment? It would be the same ask for each of the just.
That would be correct. And, and, and I, as I said, I'm gonna state it as up to.
Hey Dana, there's a couple that wanna meet after the board meeting.
Might wanna let, might see.
And this is 2022.
I don't feel like they're quite ready to give a commitment or any kind of number, but I think they would like to look at some things. That kinda, what I maybe haven't seen. Is that, is that what y'all kinda, are y'all saying? Just kind of, uh, let's, before you do any commitment, let's see kinda where some things are?
Well, I, I'm good with doing a commitment right now, and we'll discuss the, what level as we.
Well, I know, I say that, I'm, I'm talking about level. I know what you said, commitment, I understand. We're committing a, a letter of endorsement, but as far as the number, I think, I think that's what Steve was kinda saying.
I, I'll give you my take on, on putting a number behind it. I'm for you building it and all that. But we slashed our road and bridge budget, where, this year, bad. So for that same point, I don't know, in our list of priorities when we were budgeting, now, I would say, come back in our August, June, July, when we're budgeting, and let us look at the budget number on that point right now. We can't do everything we want to do in the county to start with. So our projects are upside down as we speak. So additionally, going back into the hole further doesn't make any sense to me on my point. So I would like to budget for it in June, July, August, that timeframe, and have that discussion. That'd be my take.
One thing, yeah, 'cause, and, and what he's alluding to, uh, some of Pat, we got a lot of.
Ten.
We got a lot of bridges. We got like ten.
I still got gravel roads. And how would my people?
Me too.
Meet me?
Me, me too.
I guarantee you, I got more miles than you.
Yeah, we're a little, little small, little town. You're right.
The bridge, the bridge is a real issue.
It is. And I, I am for it. I'm not against.
If y'all will get me, and I understand about the, the number, okay? I've got it. But remember, we're working with budgets. And, and we're all familiar with how budgets work. I need something to go to the legislature ASAP, all right? That's gonna be in January that I'm really gonna be narrowing it down and putting the packet together to go to them. Coming this early is also allowing you to be able to put it on a, a two-year, we'll be able to put it on two years, budget years. So I mean, I understand budgets and putting it in there.
Right.
So you're saying this project would be?
It could fall into two budget years, absolutely.
Right.
Not this year, but.
Not, not 2022, but even into 2023.
Right, right.
I guess my thing is, it, to me, when, I just rank everything by priorities, right? Like, so for example, the bridge money you asked for down there in Florence, how much is that? 500,000, 400,000, 300,000?
168,000.
All right. So we don't wanna cut that to do this. Okay? Hundred, 200,000, 100,000, whatever it is. We don't wanna cut that bridge to give money to the Florence Bridge, do we? I mean, that's my point. We've got so many things that are out there that we're getting pulled in. I'm not, and I'm just speaking for myself, countywide, I'm not ready to put a number on it. I'm, I'll pull the letter of support or whatever you wanna do on that, but I can't put a number on it because I don't know what the numbers are. I mean, I, I know our numbers are upside down on the county side right now. Maybe the Richland could chip in some money towards us to help on some of these bridges, you know? We're just asking for money.
We do. Our citizens pay county taxes. So they are, they are chipping in.
Cut out a few lawsuits, and we could probably help some too.
I heard that. We can get rid of those. We can get rid of those. I'd love to hear several of them.
So.
All right?
That's my take, but I'm one guy, so.
All right. Letter of commitment. I mean, we can, we can do that. Y'all are all for it. I mean.
Absolutely.
Y'all be shamed if y'all weren't for it, but I mean.
I just don't know where the money's coming from. That's my problem.
Is anybody up here?
Uh-uh, there wouldn't.
I mean, everybody has for it.
I just don't know where the money comes from.
I, I got you, I understand. I, it, it wouldn't be me doing, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't come ask.
Not this year, next year's budget.
Hey, let's, let's, let's look at it.
Yep.
I just don't know where the money comes from. I'd hate to say, yeah, we'll be glad to give you a million dollars or five hundred thousand dollars. And then by the way, come back and say, well, we can't give you that money now because we don't have it.
Well, we got one more bridge went out.
Which has happened to us.
I mean, that's, that's, I, I knew that was, the bridge, our bridge issue, I knew when you started talking, our bridge issue, uh.
I mean, we got some that the school bus is gonna, might, if we don't get them fixed this year.
They can't go across?
They're gonna be walking to another school bus location.
Now, fire trucks, crew buses are not supposed to be crossing that.
Alright.
I, I, I'm voting to endorse your project without a dollar fee and come back.
Alright, I'll, I'll certainly do that and I'll, I'll get the endorsement letter.
I think that's the best.
That's all, all fine, with, fine, fine and good. Um, but remember, I, I do, I do appreciate what y'all do cause I go through it just like y'all do, okay?
Yep, yep.
Every week. So, remember, this can go over multiple budget years. We're very early in the process. This is gonna be a blip on y'all's radar. Any, I mean, compared to other project, your other projects, I know. Um, but I, I think.
Maybe in the past, but not in future.
We got some projects going.
But I'm trying to save children, trying to save lives. The project in twenty-two, the project ends in twenty-two. It'll be a fine road at that point in time. People are gonna continue to speed down forty-nine and I'll have children still crossing the road. So, I mean, I know y'all don't, I mean, it just scares me to death. Do what now?
Is it a marked school crossing?
There is, there's going to be and, and there is, there is a school crossing there.
Across forty-nine.
Would you, would you want anyone crossing it? I, I concur.
Steve, right there McDonald's and.
I know where you're talking about.
But I mean.
I know where you're talking about.
Is it the red light, but then there's, the cars are peeling off like this.
Turn in and in.
Absolutely, it's awful.
But there's signs that says school crossing.
Crossing.
Wrong. I mean, you shouldn't even encourage somebody to try to walk across that highway.
That's, that's our Department of Transportation. So, um.
Wow.
Wow.
I didn't know that.
The Department of Transportation has a school crossing stuff out there?
M, MDOT put a, push the, put, push button in.
My word.
That needs to be the letter right here from the Transportation Commissioner right here, you know?
Do not cross this highway. Somebody may not stop at the red light.
Maybe we can add our, inside our letter to, write back to MDOT and say, take away the school cross.
God.
Woo.
Then I have to have the bridge.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, because you can't have it.
Yeah, I, I have to have the bridge. Yeah, I, I think it's, it was just a quick fix on their part to be able to do that. Alright, I will come back. Um, y'all look at those numbers. And advise them that it can be.
They, they did. They, they told us we don't have any. That's the problem. That's what they told us.
Be creative, be creative in your budget. But thank y'all for listening to me.
Alright.
I'm gonna come back, um, and, and I, I do need to get that letter as soon as I, as soon as I can so I can go. I'm gonna show that to the school dis, school dis, school district too. Thank y'all.
We don't need to vote on the letter or anything, do we?
No, sir, you can just instruct them to pass it and, uh, we'll have it available so.
Okay.
Alright.
Nice deal.
Yeah, good deal. Thank you, Pat.
Y'all come to my board meeting with a person there. If y'all wanna experience some more, alright?
Alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Pat. Alright, next, uh, we have a discussion, potential action on additional voluntary fire station. In Johns and I believe, uh, let Brad lead this one.
Brad, I sent this in several days ago and you gotta hit on me.
Well, I've been working on this since I've been elected.
Well, okay, alright.
Now, there is a need for a, a, uh, station in the Johns community. Uh, this would benefit upwards of seven hundred house tops that would be added on to what Puckett already covers now. Um, there's a breakdown in that on, on the page three of what a building. There is property. We got one point three acres available that we can, people are willing to sell, which is not included in this price at one eighty-two nine ninety. And if you, the aerial photo will show you where the station would be placed at.
How much do they want for it?
Fifteen thousand.
For how much?
One point three.
And it's on highway eighteen?
Eighteen and Ashley Road.
Is that pretty, oh, it's in line, you think?
Right there.
I mean, I'm not worried too. I saw it with Bronco's work down there.
I mean, I think American County, if it's on a major highway, property now around ten, ten, twelve thousand dollars.
But not, not worth, go ahead. You can't buy it where I live for that anymore.
Well, I know, I mean, places are higher than that, but I mean, I'm not gonna try to.
Right.
Negotiate a thousand dollar here or there. I mean, it's, I mean, I think it's, there is some other property pretty close to there.
Now, I think, I know this location. This is a great, great location.
Um, but looking at the breakdown on everything, this is a price that came from the guy that built the fire station in Puckett to start with. He's already quoted the building and these are firm numbers. And like I said, the one eighty-two nine ninety doesn't have the price of the property on there, which had fifteen thousand to it. And any kind of work, we can either. Let. Either let the fire station do the, uh, hire somebody to do the dirt work or the county can do the dirt work. But that doesn't have any of the material gravel or six-ten for the parking lot, um.
This price don't.
This price, the only thing this price covers is the building itself.
And further.
And.
And, and.
It covers the.
Things on inside.
Yeah, it covers everything on the inside. Be a complete building.
Except for trucks. Uh, uh, yeah, no trucks. But you already got a truck you can put there.
Yeah, we already got the fire trucks to put in.
I know where there's a place, yep.
So, it's.
You already got a fire truck to go in there?
Hush, hush. What today?
And right now Johns is sitting with a no rating, which would be a ten and it's gonna, worst case, it's be an eight. And possibly could Puckett is a seven and we could probably get that rating done in Johns at seven, which would save upwards of probably four hundred dollars a house top.
Ah, I'll make a motion that we go up to.
Well, let, I mean, let me, let me get, let me get.
Okay, I'll, I'll decline that.
There is, there is.
I'm gonna vote against it now.
Just give me a minute.
I'm playing.
There is, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in the bond money for warning sirens. That Bob and maybe one, maybe Steve was.
Yep, me and Bob.
Add.
I think there was more than one around the county.
Well, it was, yeah, it was pretty much, but Bob.
In the rural, I mean, we're gonna put them in a rural part of county. Well, with this new app we approved here a couple of weeks ago. It's gonna eliminate these sirens in the warning sirens.
In the long term. We're not taking, we're not taking any sirens down. It's just as they.
As we claim some out.
Yep, uh, yep.
And I would like to use some of that money or all the money to go toward this project or what I can.
Um, I'm good.
The only, only thing I, I'm fine with, the only thing I would like to mention, with bond projects out there in the past, we always go over some with bond projects.
That's why I'm saying up to two hundred thousand instead of hundred, limited at one eighty-two, cause you know, you know what's coming.
Well, the, the thing is, is the one eighty-two, I'm comfortable with the one eighty-two nine or we call it one eighty-three.
Well, it.
But my thing is, the land, you're talking about fifteen thousand and then whatever the dirt work or material.
I would say the two hundred plus the cost of land. And if it goes over that, we gotta come back to.
Well, it's gonna take you to all your two fifty then.
Sorry.
It basically takes you two fifty.
That's, yeah, but, I mean, I don't, I mean, you got. And then if it goes over that, we come back to the.
I, I mean, I, I.
Are you good with that?
Yeah.
I'm just saying if you go to the bond, that's fine. You're gonna come bring it out somewhere else.
But hang on a minute, just because you build a station don't mean that it's necessarily gonna lower the ratings, does it?
Yes, it does.
Well, it don't necessarily mean, but.
I thought you had to have.
Wait, does the fire, has the rating bureau looked at it?
It's a zero rating now in Johns. You had a fire station, the worst it'd be is an eight.
Yeah, but most of them will be a seven.
It's gonna, well, an eight's gonna cut them in half.
Yeah.
So, they're.
So, Brad, what you're saying? It's a good possibility and more likely it's gonna be a seven cause Puckett's maintaining the station and running. And over this past year, Puckett has been over two hundred calls just this year.
It's gonna bring the homeowner's insurance about in half at an eight.
They're, they will benefit more than they pay in county taxes.
Now, are they in a tax district?
I can tell you when we.
They only pay county tax.
So, I mean, they don't have a fire tax in district.
They're, they're not, Puckett's not a protection district.
So, what I was asking is, do they have the equipment? You gotta have the equipment going there.
We got the equipment, the staff to build it with now and the people. All we need's a, okay. Now, the fire truck, the fire truck that it's got being ready, she told me be is the fire truck that we have now. Yes. Fire rating bureau will work with us cause it's like a year past fifteen years old or something. I think that's good. But it's been tested every year and it's up, it's current on all of its tests. And, uh, I mean, down the road.
It may, but whether you build the fire department or not, that truck is gonna be.
It's gonna be there.
Right.
The truck's gonna run out no matter what.
Yeah, I mean, that don't have, that don't have anything to do with what we're doing.
We've already replaced it. We have a new one at the.
Yeah, Puckett's got, they're up to date on their original fire station one now.
They have a new one. This is their old one.
This is the old one that's there now, but we're just gonna move down there with the brush truck and a rescue truck or something.
What size building is it?
Five thousand square foot, fifty by.
Yeah, I see it, I see it.
I just know we have a, a program supposedly, I know, uh, that we programmed in all of our fire trucks when we buy them and.
Well.
Rotate them out.
Jeff Bain is the fire chief and he is trying to get some grants and stuff. And he's good about getting grants to buy these military trucks and put tankers on them.
Lord knows, they must be good. Down there one day, you couldn't get another one. That building's full of those things. Painted up, looking sharp now.
But he's got a, uh, I mean, I'm looking at that AFG grants for a new fire truck. I mean, that's hit and miss. You might get that, you might not, or we got the vehicles to put in the facility now. But I just need to get approval on, get the land purchased, cause I, where this location is, you're not gonna get any better.
Right.
Great location.
And I mean, it's limited dirt work. I mean, I'd like to get a bore sample done just to see.
Yeah.
But I mean.
Mike can fix the dirt.
So, there, there's probably, uh, s- some thought that needs to be placed into the structure of the arrangement that you guys are considering. Uh, my initial thought is, uh, that if you, if you intend to fund this project with the bond proceeds, it would be important for us to take down the property in the name of the county, uh, and to secure title, uh, so that we don't run into an issue of, um, of, of a, a donation, as it were, out of, out of county funding. Uh, the construction of the facility, in my opinion, needs to be the responsibility of the volunteer fire department. And we can provide additional support to the fire department to cover the cost of construction. And so, that would be the, the structure of your arrangement. County would take down the, the property itself and the building would be located on county property and would be, it would be county owned property, if that makes sense. But the construction of the building can be undertaken by the fire department and they're gonna occupy it and they're gonna, they're going to conduct their operations under your contract with them to provide fire service protection. So, uh, the, the arrangement will work if we handle it that way, in my opinion. Uh, my thought process is, um, that if we don't, if, if the county undertakes construction, we're going to, we're gonna find ourselves in the same kind of pickle that we find ourselves in occasionally where the bid law interrupts progress and, uh, creates barriers.
I mean, the, the last station or the, the station that was built in Puckett here a couple of years ago went smoothly. I mean, Puckett handled everything and, uh, I mean, they got it like they needed. For the amount of money that y'all gave.
Yep, Puckett won't have a, the ability here to participate, the city, a- at all. It's outside their municipal boundaries and so there's no basis for them to participate. So, it is our project. It's gonna have to be our project. I would suggest that if you decide you want to do something, you act on this today or wait until Monday or whatever, but we need, we need to provide you with the actual structure of your motion, which needs to be that the county takes down the property and that, uh, that the fire department would then be responsible for constructing the facility in whatever manner and that your participation would be up to and not exceeding an amount of additional support to the department. You would do all of that from your bond proceeds.
I make a motion that we do just what you said, up to and not exceeding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the land and the building. And we support their.
Material.
Well, yeah, well, we actually just support their voluntary fire association, whatever, however it's structured.
Yes.
To.
Steve, if I can, to, just to clarify, uh, that what you guys are doing is approving the purchase of the property.
Yep.
For fifteen thousand dollars from the bond proceeds.
I don't know if it's fifteen or sixteen.
It's gonna be fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And, and then the balance of the two fifty?
Up to.
Up to, the, the balance of that will be additional support to the volunteer fire department to be used for the construction of the Johns to, to Puckett, to fire station.
I'm honored to make that motion. Those people, um.
Yes.
They're not in my district, but they're.
Great, great.
Almost, I mean, they're almost like relatives to me and they have been paying terrible, I mean, just outrageous insurance and, and they hadn't had. A fire truck that could get to them.
Well, they paid coverage, but I mean, it's fifteen minutes away.
Right, or, or more, or more.
We got a lot of volunteers that are from the Johns community.
This, uh, this is good for all of rural racing camps.
Well, we're trying to get ratings down all over. We've managed to accomplish that in District One before we've done. And I think we owe it to all, uh, county as much as we can, the rural areas where the problems are, to try to bring them all in to get their ratings down.
I mean, and, and one day they may even have an ambulance there. Uh, I mean, I, I'm not saying now, but Pafford may s- put something there, cause we're on the, that is of, one of the furthest reached areas of our ambulance service.
And we got three guys that work with Pafford.
And they, that could happen. And I mean, one call is worth more than two hundred thousand if you're dying.
Alright, well, doing this right here, I just thought of this, the way we're doing it now with this, uh, this would, uh, prohibit the county from doing any work on it, like any of the dirt work or anything?
N- no, sir, not necessarily. Um, the, the department. Well, the department would have.
Doesn't it have to be figured in because of some kind of law?
Oh, I hope so.
What that, what the county's portion would be?
I, I think it's gonna be burdened by Steve's motion, which is not to exceed, Jared. So, whatever work needs to be done out there, however it's conducted.
Big county.
Yeah, it's county property. When y'all take it down, it's county property. So, there's no reason why Mike and his guys couldn't participate in some of the pad work.
Oh, I feel certain that Brad is gonna drive by there every day? And if somebody left a tractor running and burning diesel and wasn't setting on it, he's gonna be on?
No, no, what I'm talking about, is, is anything in the law, just like we ran into before, that said.
Bond proceeds.
The county had to give a price and it had to be figured in on the, a price that, uh, of the project. That's what we ran into in the station down.
Yeah, of course, Jared, if, if the department is responsible to, for the construction, they're not subject to the bid law. That's a private nonprofit.
Okay.
Keep in mind that where we ran into issues was that the county was actually building the bill and so.
I, I just didn't want that to be a, a surprise.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I, I think this structure is much more workable for what we're trying to accomplish here. And if we wanna see the cost savings on the construction, there, there is no other way to do it. This is the only option we have available to us.
Okay, with, with this, who monitors? Let's say we only need two, no, well, no. What I'm saying, if we only use two hundred and twenty-five thousand, but we obligated two fifty.
We're, we're only going to, I, I think, I, I don't wanna speak for the accounting side of it. I'll just give you what my thought process is. Uh, they will, they will tender to us the invoices from the contractor.
Okay.
And we will be satisfied and they'll show us, this is where we wrote the check with the contractor and we will reimburse them for that cost.
I have a feeling that Brad is gonna watch it pretty close.
So, we'll, the, they, they will probably need to go get with the local bank, probably need to take out a little signature loan to cover the float, the distance of the time period between when they get an invoice to pay, pay it and then us reimburse. And then they can satisfy that line of credit with the bank.
On the station in Puckett, back years ago, y'all wrote them a check for two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And they built the station.
Yes.
From.
Could do it that way if you want. Could do it that way if you want. You could say, here's a couple hundred thousand. It's from the bond, permitted directly to the department and let them spend it and just tell them, you gotta get your building built from within that number right here.
Record though.
Of what these thing comes in. To me, that's up to Brad.
Well, yeah, it sounds like it began, you don't have a record of what is being actually spent on.
Yep.
Well, this would be the record right here, wouldn't it?
Well, not, yeah, no, but I mean, just say they came in with a better, uh, better cost somewhere and.
Or savings.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it, it seems to me that it's more workable.
Well, I just don't know.
That we, we let them submit the invoices and we tender to them reimbursement for that invoiced amount.
It just mean, it just mean from one meeting to the next, wouldn't it?
Actually, the, it won't even be a requirement. You're already authorized the expenditure up to it.
So, if a contractor.
It's an internal accounting control.
If the concrete slab finisher's there today and, and, and wants a check today, get the office, we can write him a check that day.
Wait, so, what he's saying is they, they worked that out at the bank?
No, he, he's trying to get away from the bank.
That's what I'm trying to do, eliminate the bank.
That's what I'm trying to do. Me too. Uh, I don't know if you can do that.
It won't work for us to write our checks directly to a sub. That won't work. We're doing additional support to the department. So, we will need to figure out a way for them. They, they need to have an arrangement with their subs. They need to have an arrangement with the general that says, you give us an invoice and we will pay it within so much time.
Well, that's kinda what you do in thirty days.
They give it to us, we look at the invoice, we make sure that the work's been done, Brad is satisfied, the work's been done. We cut a check to the department for additional support in the amount of that invoice. They write the check to the contractor, okay? So, we can eliminate the bank, Brad. I'm saying that if they get into a situation where the contractor is boning them hard, I gotta have a check. They're gonna need a source that's not us, because we're limited by how we write checks. We send out checks on the fifteenth. So, they're gonna have to deal with that delay, potential delay in there.
And that can be known upfront on any of their, any of their contractors. But listen, I mean, we're gonna issue checks on the fifteenth.
Yes.
And that, them contractors, they will confront.
Yes. So, if they give us an invoice on the fourteenth, they should not expect to get a check from us on the fifteenth. It'll be the next fifteenth. So, they need to think that through and just make sure they have a good, clear understanding. But that's, this is my suggestion as to how to structure your arrangements with the fire department.
So, the metal building kit, forty-seven five hundred, we know upfront that's what that cost is. They can go with it and submit that.
We need an invoice, an invoice from the metal building supplier and we'll cut a check. We'll cut a check for, uh, additional support to the department in that amount.
That, that price, that metal building price, sounds high, I mean. All right, um, okay, so how do we need to handle?
So the motion that, that I think Steve wants to put forward, the motion would be that we're gonna authorize the construction of the, the station.
By the land and.
Right.
And, and how, how that transaction is gonna happen is the county is actually gonna take down the property. And so I'll assist in that. We'll get a legal description, potentially a survey if that, if everybody thinks that's a good idea. And we'll get the, the property part of this closed and it'll be, it'll become county-owned property. Okay? The county will then authorize the expenditure of the balance between the cost of the property and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be additional support to the Pocket Volunteer Fire Department for the construction of the Johns location.
All right, uh, had that motion by Steve. Second by Brad. Uh, any more discussion? All papers say aye? I'll oppose. Okay, um.
Let it be known now, this is coming from money out of bond that has already been set aside for this type activity.
That's correct.
This is not, we're not pulling money out of taxes and doing something, uh, even though I would do it for these people anyhow.
I think it was clear there, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, while we're right there with fire stations, uh, on additional business, add something to it on, uh, the, um, Lake Harbor Fire Station. Steve's got something.
There's two Lake Harbor Fire Stations. Uh, and Brad, thank you for, you know, jogging my memory here that I need. Not really, I've already talked to people, several things about this. Um, there's two Lake Harbor, there's a one and two. One's in Daniel's district barely and one is in my district. They're separated by about three miles, I'd say, maybe four miles, I don't know. But anyhow, um, the main one had a pipe to bust or anyhow flooded about a foot deep in water. They've got extensive damage. I'm telling, they've gotta tear out the sheet rock, the, uh, insulation, uh, a, a, and almost from, you know, the ground, uh, to three foot or four foot repairs. And they have come to me and, and the other fire station is in need of some maintenance. Uh, it's been a long time since they've done anything to enhance it. They're asking us to help them repair these two stations. The fee that I, I, and they've gotten two bids together and sent to me. Uh, and they range from about fifty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand.
For both?
Yeah, to put them together. They do have, they have been through, I mean, they, they have a little money in their bank account, a little. But it would bust them to do this.
Are they, uh, are they, again, are they taxing?
No, no.
Is that county-owned?
Uh, one or ne- neither, neither. Okay.
Oh, neither one of them county-owned?
That's correct. I thought one of them, but yeah.
I actually, I actually, uh, got, I got Jess to help me.
I was thinking.
I thought one of them was.
I worried, didn't, didn't Lake Harbor have a protection district? You know, I like catching word off balance.
Hey, if Lance is doing that, he's right.
Lance, they got a protection district at Lake Harbor? Cause we got eleven protection districts that are out there.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Are they drawing?
Yes, they do. They, now you say.
Well, you know, we just increased theirs last year because.
Cause it went up on the.
Five for that twenty years ago and nobody ever put it into the tax roll and now it's there. And so we increased the size of that also.
So they're getting funding?
They, they.
So they are taxing.
Well, one of them, I guess, is, uh, or, or I guess they're, I don't know, but. They, what they've asked us for is between seventy-five, fifty to seventy-five, whichever bid they. One of them is a residential contractor and the other is a commercial to come in and fix their station back and do some other work at the other one. And they're being a book, boy, they're not trying to. I think that they would be happy if we could help them with half. Maybe twenty-five thou- uh, that's what I would like to do is go to them and say, the county can only come up with. And we don't have it. You know, we don't, I mean, we don't have money sitting around that we, but that we might could help them with twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, in the taxing district, that would be fair, but they should be drawing money in.
Yep.
So, so to, to, to give you guys full clarity.
I don't know how it comes to them, but they're getting regular, what, uh, three meals? I think it's three point, we just talked about this the other day, Craig.
I don't think it's nothing like three meals.
It's not three meals. Resmore's getting more than that.
Huh?
Resmore's getting a lot more than three meals.
Oh, so it's more, so you think it's more than three meals?
No, no, I think it's less. I think Lake Harbor's probably a little less than that.
And you, you got a whole lot less people, I mean, concentration, uh. But anyhow.
For, for full clarity here, uh, the, Lake Harbor Volunteer Fire Department has two stations. One's at thirty-nine ninety highway forty-three. That's called Lake Harbor Station One. That's actually on PRV property. So it's under a leased PRV. Now, the building is the responsibility of the department, but it's actually leased to the department, not the county. Okay? So that, I don't know what their arrangement is under the lease. I don't know if they pay for that lease. I'm not, I'm just not familiar with it. There's no reason for the county to really be involved in that because it's, they're under contract with us to provi- to provide fire protection. So obviously, we can't spend money directly on the buildings. They couldn't send us
Right.
the, uh, agreement for the renovation and all of that, but we can do just what we did right here with Pocket. We'll do additional support if the board chooses. Lake Harbor Fire Station Number Two is at fifteen fifty-one Old Highway Forty-three. And that, that property is actually owned outright by the department. Okay? So that, that building and property are owned by the department itself. So they're under contract with us. Again, for the purpose of this, it makes it really clean and easy if the board wants to do it to just simply say to the department, here is a check for whatever the amount is and this is additional support to be used for the purpose of doing your renovations on your properties.
I, I, I beg y'all, these guys and women that are on that volunteer fire department. It doesn't matter how little or how big. When my little nephew got caught in Augur, they were there in five minutes. And he, I mean, it was, uh, they really, that's their life. That's their, I mean, I'm telling you, these people live.
All of them, you know.
All of them.
If we can just do twenty-five thousand.
With our ambulance service being slow, we.
Back then, it was an hour wait where I lived.
I don't know, probably.
Well, you would think though, yeah, all these taxing districts, you would think that they ought to be flush.
Well, they, they're.
Since they get taxes every year, you know, where the other volunteers, they operate one hundred percent off of, you know.
They can't stand a seventy-five thousand dollar hit.
Yeah.
They can stand, if we were going twenty-five thousand, I think they, and I know they, I know they'll take it. I know they'll be.
I'm sure they'll take it.
I mean, you'll make the motion.
Make motion.
You gotta make a motion to add it.
Make motion to add it.
All right, make this a motion to add this to the agenda by Steve, uh, for, um, additional support to Lake Harbor, to the, both fire stations, one and two.
For purposes of renovation.
Steve, second by Daniel. Any discussion? All favors say aye? I'll oppose, okay? Motion approved by Steve.
Yes, sir.
Second by Daniel. Any discussion? All favors say aye? I'll oppose.
Thank you.
Okay, now drop down to where we, back where we were, discuss, uh, I believe, yeah, that's all. All right, discuss, uh, about our tonnage, uh, waste management. And, um, look at picking up, compare house counts and solid waste billing. All right, uh, this is something that's been going on, uh, for a while. I think we danced around or we didn't talk back before and I think it came kind of, you know, when we started during COVID, the, um, tonnage went way up, but, well, we had a reason, we started noticing and then that was the thing. But still, our tonnage is still up. Uh, I think we're, I would try, ask Lance to come and I think we got some other information here, but, um, we're missing out probably on a lot of, uh, I know a couple of cases really surprised me. The people came in and wanted to pay their, um, garbage fee and they said they didn't have one. They said, we've been living there for three years. We're getting caught up and, uh, cause we're gonna come in here one day and you're not gonna let me have a tag. And I've heard now, just, that's just random, a couple of cases, so, uh, I'm sure there's a lot else out there. And, and the Lord knows what we're losing in, uh, garbage.
Well, we're, we're, we're.
You don't think he's gonna watch it first?
Underfunding our enterprise fund by about a million, uh, a little more. But that, that, that's, you know, that's, that's an issue that's gonna have to be addressed at some point.
I'd like to think get off center here and let's, uh, I don't know if we need to, you know, we got the, you know, contracts coming up, what, in about a year?
Yes, September of twenty-one.
All right, so, uh.
If I can, Jared, while you're, while we're on that subject. Uh, staff has already tickle, tickled the calendars. Uh, you, you guys are gonna be confronted with uh, a proposed RFP and all of that. And here's why. The current agreement that you have with your provider only allowed for one additional term. We, we triggered the additional term and it's only covers a three-year period. And so there is not the option to renew.
Right.
You will have to go back out for RFPs and you will have to enter into a new agreement with a provider if you choose to do that. And so that's, that's where we're headed and that's why. So your staff will be bringing that forward probably in the May timeframe for you guys start thinking about, talking about. Uh, we're gonna need to be out for proposals in the neighborhood of about June to give us plenty of time to get proposals in, to review them, to consider them, to have dis- discussions and negotiations. And you guys need to be in a position to authorize whoever's gonna be your provider before September one, so that by October one, they are moving. Because your, your current contract terminates September thirty.
And we need hard, some pretty good house count, hard numbers.
Yes.
To say this is what you, uh, what you're looking at.
Your staff's already kinda thinking through some things that relate to house counts. I will, I will tell you that a few years ago, we canvassed the county and counted them, you know.
That's what I'm thinking, may, may have to do that.
I thought, I thought they had took this on a few months ago, two or three months, or.
Yeah, Lance is supposed to be, was supposed to be working with nine-one-one.
He can't count on that.
It's a, it takes, it's a process. It's a lot.
So let me give you guys a thought that I have.
The hardest, smartest guy in the county.
Thanks, Lance, Steve.
Mike, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mike. Tim, no, no. McBroom, no.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
So one thought that we have is, is that we, we may need our new provider to have some skin in the game on house counts.
Saying a new provider already?
No, whoever.
It will be, it will be a new agreement. It'll be a new agreement.
All right. I didn't know if you just knew something, I didn't know.
No, sir. Uh, I'd never get ahead of you guys. Uh, so here's a, just a quick thought that I have. But i- i- it may be worthwhile for us to explore having as a part of our agreement that, that we will have a sharing of house count information that is useful for our purposes too. So that we can coordinate what we're being billed, which by, by the way, is on the basis of house count.
Right.
They, they bill us on households that in addition to the tonnage, on the collection side, they bill us by the household. So if we're paying by the household to a third-party provider, I'd like to see, how did you come up with your household counts? And that needs to be a part of our agreement. They need to share that information with us and we need to be able to track that so that we can coordinate what we're billing for what we're paying for. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I, I just need, we, we got a year, roughly a year, not a year, we got, we got ten months-ish where we can come up with some language that I can think through with Lance maybe and some others about what's, how do we need to get that data?
Is that why Lance is here? Do this all day.
Yep.
Yeah, well, you know, it is a thing, you know, the comparison between the two with our nine-one-one addressing data.
Well, you could narrow that, you could squeeze that.
Hang on, man. Hang on, I can't hear you. Just got, we got two meetings going on. All right, go ahead, Lance, we hear you now.
The, the difference in our addressing data as versus waste management, you know, we've got a few issues there. Okay? We collect address points and we have address points in the county that are on houses that may have burned, may have been a mobile home, may have been hauled away. We continue to leave an address point there. Now, we tried to go back in and put those in as a no structure instead of a residential structure so we can weed some of that out. Of course, this data was done for us in thirteen, fourteen, whatever.
Would Waste Management still be charging us for that house that burnt down?
I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't have any idea. I, I, I can't compare my data to theirs, number one. Because we have an addressing structure and the only way to compare those two data sets is do apples to apples. So if I've got two sixteen, um, well, uh, highway eighty west, okay? It has to be structured that way from Waste Management or I can't do a one-to-one match. They may have it spelled out, H I G H W A Y eighty W E S T. Our structure is not that way. It's H W Y eighty W or west. I can't do a one-to-one match if theirs is not exactly like ours. So you're gonna have a lot of stuff that falls out of that just because we can't do a one-to-one match.
And, and what I'm saying is maybe the way to, to do this is to require our contractor, whoever that may be, Steve, to require them to use our address data. That way we know.
Yeah.
They, their, their structure is gonna match ours because that's how they're gonna bill us.
It's got to. Yep, that would be. And, and make it part of that contract that David Holloway is our. No matter who gets it, David Holloway works with. He is a good guy and we're, I mean, he will.
Like I said, you know, and on our part, you know, we're still trying to, Melissa's work pretty diligently to try to go through and, and do a lot of these structures that we have as residentials that, you know, may have had a residence on them that has gone now that we go back and nostructure it so that the address stays. We don't wanna delete addresses because that's where you start screwing your address data up. You know, and your ranges on your streets. If you start blowing addresses out and you come back and you throw an address in there, then you just screwed up your schema. So we try to leave addresses that were there, there as a point.
Melissa.
Right.
Works, I mean, I knew she was our nine-one, I mean, she does a whole lot of things, but is nine-one-one addressing.
Yes.
And, but I didn't realize that she would, uh, she has nothing to do with our garbage stuff.
No, 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 no. No, she just, she assigns the addresses for her.
You're just talking about addresses.
Right. That's the point, the first point of contact where we realize or we know as a county there is the potential for a structure that will ultimately need to have garbage collected right there.
Yep.
Yeah. And that data goes to the tax assessor's office for their purposes. Ultimately, it winds its way to solid waste collection.
Hey, tell me this, just this past week, uh, uh, maybe not even week, one of my neighbors had bought a piece of property, had a how, oh, I don't know if it's called a camp house or whatever. And they've owned it for a couple of years. His son lives in it and these people are not gonna cheat. I'm telling you, they, uh. Anyhow, joined their property, but he went to get a tag and they said that he owed thousands of dollars and it was from somebody who owned that property before these people. When they bought it, they, nothing flagged, nothing showed up that said there's a eight thousand dollar garbage lien or something. Is there a way we can catch that before the trans- I mean, cause if that, if that would have been caught, we would have got that money. Is there a way we can catch that before the transit, because if that, if that would have been caught, we would have got that money. Somebody would have had to pay it if it was a lien.
Right, uh, typically, as they're doing title work, they should be running that.
A statute that don't?
But
Well, that's why we're going to change it to, uh, to, on our collection currently, right now, the only way we got collecting it is with their tags. And that's why our
Right, I mean, that's how he, this boy goes in there, and heck, the tag was gonna cost more than his truck was gonna cost.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we're going to get the legislation changed, so we can do both. You know, so we can still do a collect, debt collection, not just through tags, they can go after them in any way legal.
Right, yeah, we, we, we think we already have the authority, we don't even have to get the law changed, but we're working through that and trying to get some clarification on a couple of points about that. But to your point, Jade, ultimately, the idea is that we have s- some option other than just hanging the tag up to be able to go and collect. Steve, the short answer to, to your riddle is, the property owes the garbage bill.
It should have been settled when it was
Right, it should have been settled or, or caught in title search.
Yes, is it a lien?
The, the attorney that
What, is it a lien out there?
It is.
Yes.
And it's actually of record, and
They just look for it?
We have, we, we've done what we could to warn the title abstract community in Rankin County as best we can, that you have got to check the garbage, the outstanding garbage collection rolls. Uh, the, the short answer to your riddle, again, is the property owes the, the bill. So forget the whole issue of, I didn't even live here before, it doesn't matter, the property owes it. The closing attorney that issued the title certificate is on the hook
Could be.
for having missed it, alright?
Why you bought title insurance?
That's correct.
Unless I paid you twenty-five thousand dollars and you give me a deed, and I didn't have an attorney or anybody.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that then becomes, that's caveat emptor, buyer beware, that's just, that's why law rees can't, can't get around that.
I mean, they satisfied it, they worked it out, and, and I think they were very happy the way the tax collector's office handled it. Uh, they just weren't aware.
Yes, sir.
And that happens a lot, I mean, that's, I've heard numerous cases like that.
Steve, we've got thousands of dollars on the books that are, that fall right into that fact pattern right there.
A lot of people won't pay a garbage bill, and to get their tag, they'll go to somebody else's address and put their, you know, mom and daddy's address, put it in there, and they get a tag, and, you know, they're still garbage owed.
If this, I mean, if they wanna cheat somebody, all they had to do was keep the same address where his mom and daddy lived.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he didn't even have to change it.
But, but that does happen.
But can he not go between the, um, the, our, that officer, or?
They, they, they've handled it.
Yeah, can, can he not go before that, with it, and see if he can get it?
That, that, there's always, uh, that option, Jared, but they're, they're burdened by the fact that constitutionally, we cannot release a debt that's owed. We, we can't give it.
Oh, that's right.
They, the tax collector's office worked with them, and they're happy, I'm happy, so, I mean, that's not an issue, it's just why we were talking about this.
Oh, okay, well, as far as now, with our current provider, there's nothing, there's nothing to
We, we don't have a contract obligation with our current provider for them to do anything specific as it relates to their addressing method. We can ask and inquire, maybe useful to inquire whether or not there's a way for us to compare data, Jared, so that we make sure, hey, how far off are we on what we're getting billed for versus what we're actually billing for?
Well, that's what I was wondering, that way we can start charging.
Backlash, though?
Huh?
Um, is this gonna be a backlash, I mean, with the growth in Rankin County, are we gonna get?
The problem is, 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 I mean, we still are growing, and I mean,
I know, are we gonna end up paying more?
Yeah, I think so.
The garbage bill, we're gonna have to
Yeah, but the thing is
We're already paying now, because I mean, it will go up more as people, more people come.
I'd say we're gonna have more people, it's gonna show up more.
Well, I just run more snakes out of the morning.
I mean, uh, if we go out here and we find more, all the thing that's gonna do is help us bill or getting more money back. We're not gonna pay any more than what we're currently doing, they're billing us currently.
I'm thinking our next provider, he's gonna go up on the collection side.
You can only win.
So if we find additional
That's good for us.
Maybe they pay.
Yeah.
So is there anything at this point, if the current provider can provide, could provide us some numbers that would help us, anything that would help? That we could do that'd help us and them, I guess?
I, I would like to receive their addressing data in a format that matches our format, so we can do an apples-to-apples comparison. That would be useful for us for two different reasons. One, we need an accurate house count for our RFP. We need to be able to tell the providers, this is how many houses that we expect you to collect from.
Yeah.
So they need to bid on the number of houses, and right now, I'm not satisfied that we know what
Alright, how, currently, is there anything we could do then? I mean, with the current provider, so we're still talking about several months here.
Yeah, we can, we can ask them.
You can get a donkey or you can get
Well, how can we, who can do that? Who, who needs to do that? Well, I'd like, I'd like to see that done, wouldn't y'all like to see that done?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Current?
Yep.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if they'll do it.
Well, we gotta do it.
Huh?
It'd be nice if they do it for sure, but no matter what, we're, we're gonna end up having to hire somebody to come in and canvass the county.
And that's my thing, do we do that now, or do we do it to go ahead and start now?
In order for us to be out
I would say yes.
By June one, sometime between now and June one, we need an accurate house count.
It's gonna take a while.
That's what I'm saying, so don't, that's what I'm saying, get it out of it.
We put that burden on Lance and our, our crew, or do we hire a?
Well, in the past, we've hired third-party
But also, uh, the last time we went out and did, uh, for bid, we hired a consultant to come in and, um, worked with us on coming up with our bid, RFP itself. And we actually saved money by splitting it out the way we do it currently, by billing for collection and disposal differently, or separately. Um, so it may not, it may, but who was to try that again this time?
We have separate agreements for those two work products, we have separate agreements for those, but it's the same provider.
Yeah.
Well, do we, alright, two things, we, I'd like, I'd like to see if, uh, Keith asked for that, to see if they got the numbers and their addresses and that format you're asking for. And then, don't you think, uh, at some point pretty soon, we need to look at trying to get this house count thing down?
I think so.
It needs to have
Well, our, our new aerial photography will be here by the fifteenth of this month, which was shot in January of twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
So that will help us tremendously be able to see what structures are there and what structures are not anymore.
You can do that?
In that, do we need, do we need to still look at an independent outside, or was this?
Well, you know, even with an independent, all the data they can get
Yep.
to put into that is gonna help them do a more accurate house count.
That's something we need to
Can you oversee it? If we were to hire, I mean, you're gonna have to be the guy.
Yeah, well, last time, our county administrator was it.
He's gonna have to provide all this stuff this time, I mean, with all the technology and stuff, there's nobody that can
Do I hire a person to go out there to do the house count?
He, somebody's gotta be our in-between guy, that gives them our stuff and brings it back to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, do we need to go ahead and, and get the ball rolling and make a motion, whatever we need to do, to hire somebody or, or research some, for somebody to do it?
Yeah, that's a professional service.
Okay.
You don't have to bid that, you don't even have to request it, but I, I think we probably need to figure out who's good at that, who, who does a good job.
Right.
Maybe, maybe what we want to do right now is just have Keith make phone calls around to several counties and find out, had you done it recently, who'd use, how'd you like it? To get that information and report back to you guys at least by fifteen.
Yeah, I'm for that, so that way at least we, we've started something, yeah.
Renee, when somebody comes in to get a building permit, before that building permit issued, do they have to have a Waste Management account set up?
Yep.
Well, yeah, when they're building some divisions, the builder builds all the houses, but we don't, they don't start billing garbage till somebody moves in. It's got a, a certificate of occupancy in it.
Before it take occupancy of the house, that's when that account's gotta be activated.
Alright, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna do that, then Keith, kinda got your little marching orders.
I said, we got a lot of points on the map that are, I mean, they're houses there, there's nobody living in them because they're still under, you know, a bill.
But see, that gets me thinking, Waste Management could have been charged, still charging us for that house that nobody is making.
Apparently, they are because they are not required by our contract. And this goes back to what I was telling you guys, we probably got some language that we need to think about, including in our contract going forward, that helps us have a better handle on what we're actually being charged for versus what we're collecting for. It doesn't make any sense to me for us to pay Waste Management eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents for a household that has been empty for the past twelve months.
Right.
Why we would do that?
I don't either.
So our contract needs to account for unoccupied property, and there needs to be some flexibility in there.
Yeah, because how they always know?
Rentals
Yeah.
That, that may only be unoccupied for a couple of months. I, it doesn't make sense to me that we would necessarily require them to tell us that it's unoccupied and that they can't charge us for that. So we, we would need some flexibility built into it, but if a house goes unoccupied for six months, we need to have the collection part of that shut off.
I agree, I agree.
And that's gonna be a chore.
It's a chore.
That's gonna be very hard.
Push that responsibility off on the vendor. It's to their benefit for us to be happy with them, because we actually pay them pretty good chunk of money. So I think we got some ways to incentivize the vendor to keep us happy about this system.
Alright.
Alright, so you know what you're gonna do there, or it's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we're gonna do some investigation on who does house counts and how good are they?
Yeah.
I would, I would like for us not to pay a lot of money investigating this and for Keith and Lance to work together to bring their stuff to us, and instead of us paying for a sum of it.
County A, B, C, D did it themselves, and this is how they did it.
Yep, yep.
They're gonna research it before they come, and come back to it.
I think that's all we did last time, is just hire a bunch of kids, go out and do it.
Yeah, they were summer workers.
I don't know how accurate it ended up being, yeah, I don't know how accurate it ended up being.
I like this, what he's talking about, I mean, if you got aerial photography, it's
Uh, yeah, I mean
You cover a lot of ground.
See what y'all think's gonna be the best, be the most efficient and, and least costly.
What we really need is a rule that says, everybody has to move to a place and they can't move for four years.
And pay their bill, yeah. Alright, is that it?
Well, one thing, just one more thing just came in, uh, uh, I need to get approval for Brett Ishi to travel No Costas County, but to travel to, uh, with the new fire truck came in. Where it is? Yeah, Florida, somewhere, but that, that'll be what, next week or something, within the next few weeks.
They, they just called, he just sent me a text, as you guys got started this morning, they just called, they got off production line, things just changed with all the COVID shutdowns, this, that, and the other. So they're looking at next week going down there, but we didn't want to spring that on Monday, if he's got it, we'll go and get it approved.
Yeah, anyway.
Even if they're gonna fly Monday, then we can send him down there to inspect your truck.
I just need to add, get that added and approved.
So moved, so.
Alright, motion added, agenda by, um, Jay, second by Steve, all in favor say aye, all opposed. Motion approved by Jay, second by Steve.
Second, yep.
All in favor say aye, all opposed, okay, alright, we done, uh, anything else?
We recess or adjourn?
Well, we got
Do we have a need to go on executive session?
We got Mike Harrison, something.
Oh, Lord, I didn't know that, missed you, Mike.
Motion.
Where'd I miss that?
What you got, Mike?
I don't know.
Stan, just renewing my contract for Red Light, Stan Tech.
Oh, alright, yeah.
Oh, that's right, when I scroll down, I see you.
Board authorization to do it.
So moved.
You were, okay, motion by Daniel, second by, but Jay, all in favor say aye, all opposed.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes.
We do?
Heard he's on. Do we really?
Okay, uh,
Right, between, let's go meet these people, and I'm gonna bring them in here, so
What are you talking about?
Me who?
The South's been there waiting on us.
Who?
There's a couple that wanna, uh, talk about our resort area.
Oh, I didn't know about that.
The Souths?
That's our last
I don't see it on additional business. Well,
That's, that's not, they won't, that's not a dead here, though, right?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Jake, she's getting them.
That's them, I can see it.
She's already got them.
Is that what we're gonna talk about? I'm good. I'm good.
Right here. Yeah, I don't know why they won't meet you, man.
Who?
The South.
You wanna meet me?
Yeah.
It's all in the wrong dude.
I got hands for y'all, for y'all.
Really?
Got what? What calls?
Mike Harrison.
I was saying, Mike Harrison. Eating good calls? They did?
Hey, tell them it's Jay's fault.
They left, really?
Well, I told them it'd be an hour, I didn't know it'd be, you know, three.
Tell us, brief us.
I know, they, they live, they live, their issue, what they wanna talk to Craig about, is they live at the end of, uh, uh, Old Fair Road. Well, Brent, uh, Powell went and got the, the law changed to add some more area to that. When our ABC, ABC is saying that they are not in the resort area, there's gotta be an election held or something if anybody wanna come open a restaurant there, so, yeah.
I'm making motion there.
There's some confusion on, uh, what Brent is thinking versus what ABC is saying.
President? Bathroom, it'll be years in a minute.
That's the long and short of it, yeah. You're, you, yes, you're all around the target. The issue is that the section that Brent and Josh had this additional area added to resort, that particular section has a qualifier section in another statute that says if you upgrade your resort status under that particular section, you have to have an election. It's not inside the section where it grants resort, it's in another section and it refers back to that section.
When it says an election, are they talking about a county wild?
No, sir, a special election that is conducted as in the nature of any other election, but the only voters who are eligible to vote in it are the ones who are in the area that has been classified to be qualified resort. You're literally talking about ten people, we think, roughly, in this area? Ten voters who are potentially impacted, and, and so it doesn't make any sense.
Probably twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to hold an elec, I mean, I mean, I'm just talking about in one district.
Yes, yeah, that's correct, and I'm count, I'm counting that, but it's only a small section of the RV park. So, nobody wants to conduct a special election for ten voters, nobody. ABC doesn't, Brent and Josh certainly don't, the Souths don't wanna have to deal with that, and we don't wanna have to deal with that. So they're going to fix the statute this session, and that won't be a requirement.
Talked to them about it?
I've already talked to ABC, they've already gotten the wave off from legislators. It will go through smoothly, they're gonna try to have the legislation crafted so that it's effective upon passage, so that they don't even have to wait till July.
Okay.
It'll just happen, and, and my thought process, Jay, and you may wanna communicate this, is things are moving quickly as they can in the right direction, and it would be unwise to stir anything up that causes that process to slow down.
Yeah.
Alright.
I don't know, the legislature's gonna make the whole county
Yeah.
State, state, the whole state. Get it off of all of us, it's gonna do the whole darn state.
What needs to happen is, if you win, let's vote a pass?
No, no, pass.
That's good, that's a good point.
They're before you get to the way on the left.
Exactly, but this is gonna beat us to death.
They own the property down on the left to the end.
Alright, we got the uh motions. Motion made for the need to go to executive session by Brad, second by Steve, alright, all in favor say aye?
I guess, what are we going for?
Time to move in.
What are we doing this for?
Oh, yeah, what was the need for, personnel, personnel?
Y'all discuss the name now, you gotta make the motion to go in.
Motion, second.
Motion to go into executive session to uh talk about personnel?
Yeah.
Uh, in favor, say aye?